October 27th meeting of City Council to order and ask our Madam Clerk to kindly call the roll.
Councilwoman Del Chapo.
Here.
Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember Safran.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seekings.
Here.
Councilmember Shade.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Appel.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Tecklenburg.
Here, and Mayor, I mean Councilmember Waring is here. I don't know if you heard.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm here.
All right, so I do see Councilmember Seekings is with us.
I am here.
You would like to join us. Councilmember Seekings will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh, just join me for a moment in prayer. Thank you very much. Heavenly Father, help make each of us an instrument of your grace, weave us into a community showing forth your wisdom and your tenderness. Bless all and our differences and support our courage, particularly in these days, to stand together. We call on you to gather us in your divine spirit. Lead us as we lead, protect us and our precious children, and guide us down that path of truth and justice. In the name of Jesus, let us now put forward and act in the love of God. Amen.
Amen. Well done.
If you'd stand and join me, the flag is right to the hand of my office here, recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Griffin, thank you. First, I'd like to share a proclamation to a wonderful organization Low Country Local First and its founder Jamie Haley. And this year in particular, rather than a bi-local month, y'all, we're going to have a bi-local season because the importance of supporting our local businesses this year as they've been challenged by COVID-19 is just, it's more than a nice thing to do. It's an essential thing for us all to do. So our proclamation reads as follows, if you will bear with me. Whereas the city of Charleston is proud to join Low Country Local First in supporting and celebrating Charleston's local independent businesses and the impact they have on the city's culture, economy, and character. And whereas all local businesses feeling the impacts of the COVID-19 crisis, our support is more crucial than ever to help pivot consumer spending to our community-based businesses whenever possible. Whereas by buying local, Charleston's residents embrace this unique vibrant community and recognize it's one-of-a-kind businesses that keep us from becoming anywhere USA and encourage a strong sense of pride in our, in place. And whereas by buying local, Charleston's residents create prosperity for all. The multiplier effect of locals choosing locals creates diverse job opportunities protecting us from the effects of economic downturns. And whereas by buying local, Charleston's residents help to improve and protect the environment. The purchasing habits, central location, smaller footprint of local businesses often results in less pollution and congestion. By buying local, Charleston's residents keep money in circulation in the local economy. For every hundred dollars spent at a local independent business, forty-five dollars goes back into the community versus only fourteen dollars when spent at a national chain store. Whereas by buying local, Charleston's residents support a healthy and happy community. Studies show that those who live in communities where local independent businesses are the norm are healthier and thus happier. Whereas Low Country Local First was founded nearly fifteen years ago under the direction of Jamie Haley. She has led the organization through tremendous growth during her tenure, creating a movement around buying local, changing consumer purchasing practices, and providing public education on the economic benefits of supporting community businesses. Whereas Haley and Low Country Local First team have helped strengthen small businesses, increase the number of farmers in the region, and prioritize minority-owned businesses. And founding director Jamie Haley has announced sadly her departure from the nonprofit organization on December 31st by acknowledging November 1st through December 31st as bi-local season. The city of Charleston supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. I urge all citizens to join in this celebration and to buy local for the holidays and throughout the year, for that matter. Now, therefore, I, John J. Tecklenburg, Mayor of the city of Charleston, along with City Council, do hereby proclaim November 1st through December 31st as bi-local season and December 31st, 2020 as Jamie Haley Day in the city of Charleston. Ms. Haley, you have the floor.
Well, now I'm choked up. That's quite an honor. I appreciate it. This work has been more than I ever expected it to be in terms of the reward that it has provided me. And it has been such a joy to work with the local businesses in our community, with the city of Charleston, with my amazing team, with many board members who are small businesses owners throughout the year, I mean throughout the years. And I never anticipated that it would become what it has become when setting out. And, you know, I hope that even when we move beyond COVID, which we certainly, most certainly will, that we will continue to see the incredible value and importance that the local business community means to us. These are our friends and our neighbors who are really building their American dream and who've invested in our place and make not only our economy stronger, but our community more vibrant. So, thank you so very much.
Well, you're welcome. And you've done a terrific job. You really have created a movement. And this year particularly, supporting small businesses, get the resources they need and steering people to loans and help that they can get. Low Country Local First has just been amazing. And I know you have a bright future still ahead of you in whatever endeavors you pursue, but you've done a terrific job. So congratulations and thank you from all of Council and Charleston.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Well done. Well done.
Thank you so much. I know that we don't usually entertain comments after a proclamation that just does bring joy to everybody. But I, knowing the most recent cause, I think that Low Country Local First has taken up in support of the market being open for all the vendors at Marion Square. I was hoping maybe you could just give a little rundown about that, Mayor, because it is really good news. So can you just tell us when the market's going to open to all the vendors?
Oh, well, we started last week including other vendors other than the farmers. And so I think every week the footprint gets expanded a little bit and we expand the hours and the number of vendors that can safely do business. We are monitoring the total number of customers at any given point in time and are requiring that folks wear a mask. But I think the hours are now nine in the morning till one, and we have both the farmer's market and local vendors as well.
That's encouraging to hear. Yeah. When we, we just recently did those small business grants through some funding that we received from telecom and South State, and there were a lot of, a lot of vendors from the, from the farmer's market who are applying for those, you know, one thousand and two thousand dollar grants. And we've been flooded with, with thank you notes and emails from those folks who appreciate that support. So I'm very happy to see that that's opened back up again. That will, that will significantly impact them.
Great. Well, thank you again, Jamie. Appreciate you being with us tonight and all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. So tonight, y'all, we've got a number of public hearings that are scheduled. The first one is just regarding the proposed 2021 budget, city budget. And I do want to share with anybody in the public who has signed up to speak on our budget tonight, let you know that Council is not taking any action tonight on the budget. We have a loosely proposed budget, but there's more work to be done on it. But we certainly have this opportunity tonight for anybody to make comments about our priorities for next year's budget. No action, however, will be taken by Council tonight on budget matters. So that being said, could I ask Jennifer, our clerk, to lead us with anybody who has signed up to speak on that matter?
Yes, we have three people who are signed up to speak. And Mayor, did you want us at a time limit?
Two minutes would be, would be great. Thank you.
First up we have is Marcus McDonald. And if you are ready to speak, if you could press star six on your phone to unmute yourself. Marcus McDonald. All right, next.
You're out there, Marcus. Star six to unmute. All right.
Next is Cora Webb. And Ms. Webb, if you're on the line, if you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Cora Webb. I just unmuted myself. I don't know if Marcus is going to go before me or should I just go?
Please proceed, Ms. Webb.
Okay, my name is Cora Webb, and I am a black constituent living and working in the 29414 and 29405 area codes. And I'm speaking to ask council members to approve a more equitable 2021 budget that prioritizes our communities over the Charleston Police Department. Excuse me. That would mean reallocating a minimum of five million dollars into life-affirming services. Why is it to me that this is important? I said a minimum simply because five million is the bare lease that we can use to go back into life-affirming activities and services for our community members. Also, me and every other taxpayer pay three hundred and forty-one dollars plus to the police department, but nowhere near that amount goes into youth and education programs or permanently affordable housing in a place that gentrification is knocking people into the street. This amount of money also does not go into living wages for employees. And this year, we have been hit with a pandemic whose consequences have no time cap. People have been hospitalized, people have lost their jobs, people have been put into the streets, and people have lost their lives. But COVID isn't the only killer. If we add on the massive racial disparities of income and arrest and also add on our well-known system of racist policies and economic exploitation, we get to a larger looming, more evident, evidential killer. So why do we, the most overburdened and unrepresented people, have to struggle to survive while the CPD receives fifty-three million of the budget to further harass us? For these reasons and more, I urge you to prioritize us, your constituents, your community members, our families, and the 2021 budget. And I thank you for your time and passes to the next person.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next is Christopher King. And Mr. King, if you're on the line, if you could press star six.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity just to quickly talk about the budget. We look forward to seeing the initial draft. But as we try to do every year, really just want to urge you to consider adding funding for the planning department and specifically for enforcement staffing. We have incredible development pressures on this community like we've never seen before. And it seems like the department is almost, has fewer resources and staff than it did a decade ago when things were much slower. So we just feel that this is stressing the process and really hurting the outcomes on the projects that are working through. So given the tremendous pressures we have to grow and develop, we think it's imperative that the planning department be reinforced with additional staff, and we would appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. McDonald, are you on the line? If you are, press star six. Marcus McDonald. All right. We did receive some comments for this item. And had three people who asked that funding not be taken from the police department. They said it is essential they continue to receive training and equipment to protect the community. Thirteen people supported a budget that included less police funding and reinvesting five million dollars into funding for youth and education, low-income housing, sidewalk improvements, and living wages for all city employees. And four people said there was a lack of transparency and accessibility regarding the budget. And those were all the comments that we received for this item.
Great. Thank you. Okay, as I mentioned, there's no action for Council to take on this item tonight. We'll move on to number two, which is a zoning map change.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we get, try to give at least one more opportunity in November for people to speak about the budget? Would that be possible?
Yes, sir. It's not only possible, it's already planned.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, as we bring forward the, the budget per the schedule, as Wharton has outlined, we'll have other opportunities for public comment on it.
Because I'd like to put it out there, you know, to my constituents that if they have another opportunity to call in to a November meeting before we take any action, just to maybe do it one more time or something in November if possible. Thank you.
I think we'll even have an additional workshop meeting as well. Councilmember Shade?
And Mr. Mayor, we've been advertising our ad hoc budget committee meetings regularly. I can't remember the first time we met, but this has been an ongoing process for the public to be aware that we have been very open and transparent with this process and the many struggles we've been going through. So the public should be made aware and be, and I try to let my constituents know when we have these meetings, stuff they do want to do on it, it's available when we're doing it to these ad hoc budget meetings. That's where the sausage is being made. And I would certainly encourage people who are listening into this council meeting tonight to pay attention to when those meetings are being scheduled and they can participate and listen in. It's very educational and very informative. Thank you, sir.
Of course, all of our meetings, by the way, are on, posted online. But I find the easiest place to keep track of them all is every Monday morning in the newspaper. They list all the public meetings regionally, and of course, ours are included. That's a good spot to pick up when these meetings occur. All right. So number two is a zoning matter, and I think Mr. Morgan is going to present, and then we'll take public comments.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I'm going to move to the screen share, and we will look at some of the images we have here. Okay, there we go. Hope you all are seeing that. Okay, so let's see if I can advance it. It's not liking me advancing it. Let's see what we, okay, we'll go here. Are you all seeing the rezoning E2 on here?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, this is 102 President Street. It's at the corner of President and Cannon. It's a little bit over a half acre of property. It's a request to rezone from the old city height district, height level of four, four stories to the old city height district five, level of five stories. And the property is here at the corner of Cannon and President. I hope you can see my cursor there. It's across the street from MUSC parking deck. It's immediately adjacent to some condominiums that are, have a four-story building and a five-story building here. There's another medical building a little bit further down the street. That's a four-story medical building. And of course, the parking deck is a five-story height district. Let's go to the next images in this show here. So this is in our Century Five plan. It's in our urban zone, so this would be an appropriate height in that urban zone. This is an aerial view of the property, and it's currently a parking lot at present on this corner. Here is an image of the property. You can see it right here. Surface parking lot. Here are the condominiums that are to the east of it. This is the five-story parking deck that is to the west of it. This is another aerial image of the property. Again, you can see the condominiums very clearly to the east of it. And here's a ground view of the corner property, another ground view of the corner property, and the view of the property looking from Cannon Street with the parking deck in the background and the parking deck that is across the street. And these are the apartment, the condominiums that are adjacent to it. And just a street view across the street as well. And it was at Planning Commission. The recommendation was an eight to zero vote in favor of the change in the height district. And of course, staff recommended for this as well.
All right. Would, did anyone from the public sign up to speak on this matter?
Yes, we have one person, Brian Hellman, if he is on the line.
Thank, thank you, Brian Hellman here. I really have, I'm the applicant, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have otherwise. I'll remain silent. Thank you.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
District Councilmember Gregory.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the property is in my district, and I've got no opposition from anyone in the community with regard to it. I have spoken to Brian and a number of other people. I support the project.
Thank you. Councilmember Shade?
This is more out of curiosity than anything else. So would this allow this change due, Brian, for your project?
Councilmember Shade, what this would allow is, right now, it's the four-story district. We're next to, as Mr. Morgan pointed out, a building that's four and five stories. And then the parking garage that's on the other side of the street, even though it's in a five-story district, it's actually a six-and-a-half-story garage that has a helicopter pad on the top of it. So what this would allow is, it would allow my client to build a building that's more in size and shape with that which surrounds it and build something that would make a much more appropriate entry into Cannon Bar.
Brian, if I could ask, what will the ground level use be like? Will it be just parking or will you have some retail or other use on the ground floor?
Mayor, the plan for the property that Gary Goff and Hank D'Antonio and Kara with their team are working on includes basically a wrap of commercial uses that'll be parking behind that. So from the street, there will likely be retail restaurant-type uses that would be visible to anchor that corner and do something to better engage. You know, when you come in from West Ashley, as you know, you drive past a series of parking garages. There's one missing parking garage that's been approved but not yet built where the, I guess it was the SCN office tower that used to be there many, many years ago. And then when you pass that, you get to this site, and then this would, this would enable there to be some of those uses that would be more than just the housing that's above.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from Council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed, the ayes have it. So with the pleasure of Council, I would suggest we take number three and four together. They're both related to Laurel Island. One is the height and the other is the PUD. But I would think it would be efficient to let the public comment on either one, if that's okay with y'all.
No, I don't have a problem. Second.
Mr. Morgan, you want to present on three and four, and then we'll open it up?
Yes, sir. Will do. Okay, so, so number E3 is a change for height districts in the Laurel Island area, and it involves all the parcels that are part of the PUD. It involves removing parcels that were currently in the old city height district from that zoning district and having their height regulated via the PUD. And on this screen in front of you, you see the parcels that are involved. The TMS numbers are on your agendas here. It's approximately one hundred ninety-one point six acres. Just to show you a couple of other images at present, this area is, well, on the previous slide, we have the height districts on here. It's the W height district as part of the old city height district, and then some other four to twelve-story height districts at present. And again, those would all be removed and the heights would be regulated via the PUD. Then the next slide is E4, and this is the PUD. And this is another public hearing opportunity for the PUD. It's taking these properties from general business, from heavy industrial, upper peninsula zoning, DR3, to a planned unit development. And I'm just going to do a couple of quick slides that just orient everybody to the site. Of course, this is in our Century Five plan as industrial and urban core recommendations, so that fits appropriately. This is aerial of the outline of the properties that are part of the PUD. Here we have the height districts that are at present, that are being taken off the property as part of the height district change. And then these are some images from the PUD that show what would go in its place. These are the height districts that would be part of the PUD, the different districts ranging from twelve-story, eight-story, two-and-a-half, and three-and-a-half-story, and a two-story area. The PUD also has, as previously stated, extensive open space that is shown in green in this image here. And then we have the overall PUD layout, and you do see the extensive green space as well as where the buildings and the blocks would be. And of course, there are buildings and blocks on the western side of Morrison Drive in this area that are also part of the PUD. We have, that's the end of the applicant slides, and of course, you all have a memo from Chip McQueeney in reference to this and his work with the applicants on some revisions to the PUD. And you all have that as part of your agenda package, and Mr. McQueeney is here with ability to answer questions in reference to that. Of course, this was at the Planning Commission a couple of months ago and had approval of seven to zero for the, well, actually, it was last month, this month, for the height district change. And then it was a couple of months ago for the overall PUD, and both of these were approved with a seven to zero margin. The Planning Commission did have some conditions in reference to the Laurel Island PUD, and these are all being addressed via the changes that Mr. McQueeney has discussed in the memo that you have in your packages.
Well, thank you, Mr. Morgan. And as Council knows, we reviewed the changes in Mr. McQueeney's memo at our recent workshop meeting regarding this. We could go over those again, but I think for all intents and purposes, Council has been apprised of those. And I think we'll move along unless you got more, Mr. Morgan, to our public comments.
Okay.
All right. Madam Clerk?
We have fifteen people signed up, and the first speaker is Mayor Riley.
Great. Welcome, Mayor Riley.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. A few remarks, and thank you so much for the opportunity. It was many years ago when the concept of Laurel Island was presented to me in my office then at City Hall. I remember it well. It was like the discovery of a potential huge new asset for our community that I did not know existed. Since then, with substantial citizen engagement, hard work by the owners and city staff and city officials, the original plan has been greatly improved. Laurel Island, Laurel Island will be a huge asset for our community for the generations to come. And I'll quickly cite three reasons. First, is the public access along the beautiful waters edge. There are few, if any, opportunities like this in our country. This asset will be a benefit to the citizens of Laurel Island, the surrounding neighborhoods, and in many ways, our entire community. Second, the extraordinary amount of affordable housing, ten percent, and in perpetuity, will be a world, in a world-class location, will be of unprecedented value to will be of unprecedented value to this community. Three, in a robustly growing part of our country, this development is not on the outskirts, but essentially located within an existing community, connecting with and enhancing the already existing neighborhoods. This is the opposite of sprawl. Rather, it is a wise and far-sighted blueprint for making our region even more successful and livable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is Betsy Cahill. Ms. Cahill, if you're on the line, you could press star six.
I'm on the line and I'm very sorry. I have to follow former Mayor Riley. That's a tough assignment. Um, good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Um, in the spirit of full disclosure, in addition to being a resident, I am chairman of the Preservation Society Board. And I'm here to comment on Laurel Island. While the PUD has come a long way, there are still major inadequacies in both the product and the process. First, the product. Thanks to the good work of the Preservation Society staff, the number of potential residences has been capped. We had a role with many others in agitating for more green space and more generous affordable housing. But we also discovered that the PUD was not in conformance with the old city height district. This will shortly be resolved, but the fact that neither Mr. Clement's team nor the city caught this speaks to a review process that has been patchy and rushed. Hasty, hasty decisions are generally not good ones. But this PUD seems to have been expedited at every turn, especially alarming in a time when the public's ability to engage meaningfully has been greatly reduced for public health reasons. The lack of a detailed land use plan such as the one for Daniel Island remains a huge sticking point. Why would the city surrender a planning authority to a developer? We need to know specifics of the plan, not to be put off by good intentions and vague statements. And that brings me to the process. In our letter to the city and to all of you earlier this fall, the Preservation Society has stated its concerns about the compromised public process, particularly at the July 15th Planning Commission meeting. On a project with so many ramifications, the city must find ways to inform and engage people more substantially. If that means slowing down a bit, so be it. Once the PUD leaves this virtual chamber with final approval, you will never see it again. I ask that you stand up for the residents, slow down the process, and keep planning authority with the city where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Stephen Harris. Mr. Harris, if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. Mr. Harris, are you on the line? Our next is Megan Mills. And Ms. Mills, if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself.
Yep, I'm here. Um, yes, hello. I would, I'm just speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Low Country Low Line. We again support the Laurel Island PUD and their inclusion of the minimum of 39.2 acres of green space with connections to the future low line. The Friends of the Low Country Low Line agree that with their vision of a network of green spaces and parks that will be integral to the overall plan. We support their plan to emphasize connections to public transportation and their incorporation of bike and pedestrian routes. We support the Laurel Island's commitment to the preservation of the out, of the beautiful outer waterfront perimeter of Laurel Island for bikers and pedestrians. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next is Cashin Drayle. Mr. Drayle, if you're on the line, if you could unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you to, um, you all for holding this additional public hearing. This is Cashin Drayle with Historic Charleston Foundation. With the goal of ensuring that Laurel Island becomes a model for until development, enhances the surrounding neighborhoods and contributes to Charleston's overall sense of place, the Charleston Foundation has been actively engaged in the development of Laurel Island's hood. Many of the key improvements to the initial proposal were made by HCS, which is articulated guiding principles for the entire development, establishment of fixed bones terminating at the water, clearly identified locations for public recreation and access to the water, and a commitment to building height districts. The PUD proposal currently before City Council is markedly improved, incorporated, incorporating changes recommended by the Planning Commission and most recently by council and citizens at the council workshop. However, there are still areas where HCS has concerns that should be addressed before file approval, including 10% of the total housing will be workforce housing, but only will remain as such for a 10-year period. We would like to see this extended to 25 years. We'd like to see more detail in the management plan for the Robert Mills and Standard Oil ruins. Cultural resources on the property include doc, to include documentation, interpretation, and stabilization. In reviewing the sightlines for the island's allowable height districts, we'd like to see some sort of a height buffer so that the skyline doesn't drop so dramatically at the western portion of the island facing the Robert Mills ruins. Lastly, we'd like to see a clearly articulated commitment to the Laurel Island design principles will adhere to the overarching guiding principles of the entire development to include an emphasis on sustainable and resilient design and building practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Cash. Appreciate it.
Next is Sam Conduros. And if you're ready, if you can press star six.
Right, okay. Hi, this is Sam Conduros. Um, I serve as president and CEO of South Carolina Bio, which is the state's life science economic development organization with a, uh, overarching mission to build, advance, innovate, grow the industry. It's comprised of pharmaceutical biotech, medical device, research, testing labs, digital health and beyond. Fastest-growing segment of industry in South Carolina now outpacing aerospace and automotive. About double the average wages in the state. And the industry spends triple the research and development, uh, dollars of all other industries, including aerospace and automotive. Most importantly, huge diversification for our economy, especially as we're seeing in the middle of COVID where the industry is front and center as a solution provider. Currently, a $12 billion impact on the economy in South Carolina each year and very recession-resistant based on it's being intertwined with healthcare. But what we have lacked is an adequate number of what I'll call dynamic physical destinations for this industry to cluster. And I've been introduced to the Laurel Island concept by the developers. Extremely impressed that this can be an incredible destination location for the industry to flourish in Charleston, which is currently the hottest market in South Carolina, not only for domestic life science companies, but particularly international life science companies that are looking to establish themselves in the United States, particularly in this post-COVID timeframe. So my main purpose is to express how enthusiastic we are about the, the huge potential that we see of a, a very thoughtfully designed live-work-play mixed-use development that can incorporate this dynamic industry on Laurel Island.
Well, thank you, sir, and thank you for the work you do to help promote, um, life science, uh, business development at West Edge and at the South Carolina Research Authority property on Upper King Street. Thank you very much for that.
Next is Colby Hollyfield. And if you're on the line, if you could press star six.
Thank you. I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Daniel Island Ferry and Charleston Water Taxi to, uh, put our support behind Laurel Island. Their commitment to the open space along the water and public access to the water is exactly what we need. Um, as you know, we're, we're trying to expand our service and grow our fleet. And the key to that is, is, uh, public access to docks and in the waterways. So we're committed to provide that and expand our service and discussions with them uh, indicate they're committed to, to making that available. So one thing we've, we've struggled with is moving our way inland and kind of moving up, up the rivers. And, uh, this will, will get us a little farther up. So we're excited about it. Hopefully, uh, we'll get approval. And, uh, there's our, hopefully, future, uh, water taxi and Daniel Island Ferry dock right there. So we just wanted to, to, uh, put our voice of support behind this plan and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Robert Clement. Mr. Clement, if you're on the line, if you'd like to go ahead.
I'm Brian Hellman here, uh, for Robert Clement and the development team on Laurel Island. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions council may have. Uh, and we can wait until the end or we can, we can answer those now, whichever you prefer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll, we'll wait if you don't mind till everyone's, uh, done.
Scott. Next is Scott Hederman. And if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself.
Greetings, council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. My name is Scott Hederman. I'm the owner of the F45 Fitness Studios here in Charleston, South Carolina. Uh, I appreciate you, you guys for having me on. Um, we have studios in Mount Pleasant downtown and West Ashley. And, uh, I've been a small business owner here since 2016. We've been lucky enough to, to grow our fabulous community and network through F45. We have a diverse group of ages, ethnicities and backgrounds. And one common thread that we have found throughout our community and especially through this recent pandemic is that you can't replace the various benefits that have been created through fitness and recreation. Uh, and that includes group activity. Uh, I've seen that the Laurel Island development is going to provide recreational and sports facilities that will not only be an asset to the residents, but to the city and the whole. Uh, these venues will open up the opportunity for many more sports leagues in Charleston. Uh, various sports, including beach volleyball, soccer, baseball, softball, just to name a few. And it'll range from youth development leagues to adult recreational leagues as well. So as I mentioned earlier, the benefits of group recreation are endless. And it seems that the Laurel Island Development Project is a great asset for increasing these opportunities. So I appreciate your time and for these reasons, I support the City Council in approving the PUD tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Ben Brackett. And Mr. Brackett, if you're on the line, if you could press star six.
Yes, ma'am. Um, good evening and, and thank you guys for having me this afternoon. Um, I'm a, a local general contractor that partners with developers for various, um, developments, redevelopments across the tri-county area. Uh, we've been lucky enough to be a part of, of redevelopments similar to this and, uh, and have been able to see, you know, what this long process can, uh, can create at the end. Um, it's not every day that you have the opportunity to, you know, to repurpose a landfill and, and turn it to a strong asset for our, our own community and our own backyard. Um, we recently were able to see this with the, the Garco Mill project and, and the abatement project in Park Circle. Um, building on a landfill area like this, you know, can be extremely costly, time-consuming and very difficult. But it's a large area of land that we can reclaim, um, locally to our peninsula that would otherwise go wasted. Um, I think it would really create something good that would, that can withstand the test of time. Um, for, you know, not only my lifetime, but for, for generations to come and withstand any, any challenges Charleston likes to throw at it, whether that's, uh, seismic activity, hurricane activity, or sea level rise. Um, so for those reasons, I wanted to call in support of the project and, uh, look forward to hearing from everyone else this evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next is Joseph Wade. And Mr. Wade, if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself.
Hey, council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, so my name is Joseph Wade. I'm a, uh, lifetime resident of Charleston, South Carolina. Um, my mom graduated from Bishop, England. My dad graduated from Middleton. I went to Bishop, England and then finished at the Citadel. Um, I'm a co-owner of F45 Training in Mount Pleasant downtown in West Ashley and also opening a healthy, uh, smoothie bar in the downtown Charleston Peninsula. Um, I just want to say I'm completely in support of the Laurel Island project. I really, um, think that the open green spaces is going to be beneficial for the overall health and wellness of the Charleston community. And the two-mile use path creates a great opportunity for general public recreation, including exercise. Um, over the past few years, I've seen a huge increase in physical activity in the Charleston area due to the increase in parks and the overall well-being of these parks. And I think that will have a great impact positively on the overall health and wellness of the Charleston community.
Terrific. Thank you, sir. Thank you for sharing that.
Next.
You guys have it.
Next is Nick Villa. Mr. Villa, if you are on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, I can, this is Nick. Everybody can hear me?
Yes, sir. Got you. Loud and clear.
Okay. Uh, I've enjoyed living on the Charleston Peninsula for many years. And, uh, living on the peninsula gives me a first-person view of all the challenges that Charleston faces on a daily basis. Flooding, traffic, cost of living, those kinds of things. In Charleston, we hear about these issues on a daily basis. And the easy thing to do is blame developers for all the problems and complain that too many people are moving here. However, if you look in the relationships between these problems, you find that developments such as Laurel Island are part of the solution and not the cause. The population in Charleston is growing and will nev, and will inevitably do so in the future. I'd much rather see these new residents moving into well-planned, end-user-focused urban developments that profit-driven urban sprawl developments, which is the only alternative. I read a lot about this and the developer of this project has done an excellent job of planning this project to reflect the very definition of smart, responsible, resilient urban development. It is affordable housing to ensure our essential workers don't have to make the choice between driving 45 minutes to work or spending irresponsible amount of their income on housing. It has waterfront green space and pedestrian paths to give general population opportunities to enjoy Charleston's greatest resource without having to go for a boat or something like that. It has office space, retail, entertainment, the list goes on and on. And it's all contained within a walkable, walkable community focused on the pedestrian. This project checks every box for what Charleston should be doing right now. And if there was ever a project to support, I support turning an urban landfill into a live-work-play type island. And my last point is regarding the PUD, PUD document itself. I know there's some concern regarding the flexibility that provides to the developer. And that is understandable. However, this is necessary in order to ensure that the project can adjust the needs of Charleston going into the future. The current plan addresses these issues as facing today, but there's no way to detail out a project that will address the issues Charleston will face in 15 years. It's exactly the same way that Daniel Island and Magnolia's PUDs are structured and Laurel Island should be no different. Based on these points, I urge the City Council to vote in favor of Laurel Island tonight and push this project one step closer to becoming generational asset for Charleston community as a whole.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next is Margaret O'Brien. Ms. O'Brien, if you're on the line.
I'm here. And I would like to urge you not to approve any actions until the following criteria are met. That the city's comprehensive plan has been completed and the details of the PUD align with the comprehensive plan. That the Corps of Engineers plan for the city wall and the developers' plan are aligned to ensure that we do not end up with a flooding disaster. That the developer has completed a detailed drainage and flood mitigation plan to offset the significant amount of current permeable acreage and drainage the project will eliminate. And the city has a plan for using the TIP funds that ensures the taxpayers' money is used for something citizens need. Specifically, more affordable housing is now allowed by the recent state legislation. That the developer has completed a realistic traffic impact assessment and mitigation plan to address the adverse impacts of traffic entering, leaving and crossing the peninsula. That the developer has completed a detailed land use plan that ensures the green space proposed will continue as it is proposed now. As Mr. Waring discussed last meeting. And that the developer's proposal no longer includes only its own architectural review process. I think it's essential that citizens get what they need and that there be effective city oversight through the life of the development. And I would ask you all, walk the walk, don't just talk the talk. Prove that you care about the citizens as well as the developers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Next is Christopher King. And Mr. King, if you're on the line, if you could unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, Christopher King with the President.
through the life of the development. And I would ask you all, walk along, don't just talk to talk, prove that you care about the citizens as well as the developers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Next is Christopher King. And Mr. King, if you're on the line, if you could unmute yourself.
Good evening, Christopher King with the Preservation Society of Charleston. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, yes, sir. Crystal clear.
Great. Thank you. I just want to say obviously that the turnout of support tonight for Laurel Island is impressive, and, you know, certainly focused on some positive aspects of the project. And to be clear, you know, we see many of these benefits as well, but, you know, we, we know that these type of projects evolve over time, and that's why the details and the rules and the process matter. And that's what we focus on, and we have real concerns. You know, the one gentleman said that this is like the Daniel Island PUD, and that it should be. I totally agree. But as you know, this is not at all like the Daniel Island PUD. We've again submitted a letter to the mayor and council outlining our concerns with the PUD and the process by which the PUD was approved. You know, we maintain that the public engagement has been insufficient, and the city's approval process has prevented participation. We've continued to get emails as recently as yesterday from residents unable to submit comments due to technical errors, and this is an ongoing concern. You know, we know this is an incredibly difficult time, and y'all have an incredibly difficult task in trying to, to, to ensure that public engagement happens. And, and we applaud the efforts, but we urge you to do better. And to this end, I want to call attention to the letter that we shared with you on September 15th outlining how the handling of the Planning Commission meeting hindered the public participation. In that letter, as you will recall, we urge you to send this back to the Planning Commission to allow the public to participate in the hearing as provided by law. Our letters and our concerns have gone unacknowledged and unaddressed, and we urge you to correct this before you approve this application. To be clear, we fully support the development of this site, but not a plan short on details and absent public engagement. As you know, we've shared our concerns, and I don't want to rehash those, but, you know, we saw that there was a lot of issues with the legality of this and, and having to go back and redo the heights because it was not legal. You know, it doesn't make us feel better being right, but it, because we know that it ultimately erodes the public's confidence in the process, and we're concerned by this. You have our letter. The one thing I'll urge you again is to please, was there a time limit stated?
It's two minutes.
Two minutes. Yes, sir. Please wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Despite, despite these revisions, you know, we're concerned with this plan. They can build as little as 10% of the commercial and retail and increase the residential by 82%. We ask you to do better, and we're increasingly concerned by the city's approach to managing development. From Epic Center to Kane Hoy, to Longborough, you're being asked to cede massive entitlements on hopes. And we want the city to be responsible and require the development to present a clear vision and plan, and ensure that the PUD has the teeth to enforce that plan. We urge you to not accept this and to stand up and demand better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Eddie Bello.
Just let Andy stand. Hi, I'm just here as a member of the development team to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then lastly, Tamika Gaston signed up to speak and mentioned that she wanted to speak on an ordinance, but I wasn't sure if this was the item that she wanted to speak to or not. So, Mr. Gaston, if you wanted to, to speak on this item?
Not on this item. It was in regards to the city budget.
Okay.
Am I allowed to speak now?
No.
Ms. Gaston, do you mind? We'll finish this one, then we'll come back to your remarks during our dissipation period at this point. Thank you.
Fair enough.
All right. So I guess that concludes comments on Laurel Island. The matters number three and four come to Council.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I had some comments that we received also as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is for items E3 and E4.
Hello?
Eleven, eleven people asked to vote, asked Council to vote against moving forward with the Laurel Island Development. They said that there needed to be more robust conversation among citizens who have concerns, and that decisions could not be made during a pandemic, and a flood plan needed to be approved. There was also a letter of support from the Charleston-Fridan Association of Realtors that said that their affordability is, affordability is a constant threat to their industry, and that housing costs have increased significantly. They said that Laurel Island Development would be an excellent addition to the city because 10% of the units would be set aside for affordable housing, and the land would provide a diverse mix of uses where citizens may live, work, and play. And those are all the comments that we received.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and, and my colleagues on council. I'm going to support this Laurel Island development. I have met with the developers. They keep me abreast of everything that's going on from day one. I made, I had them to go out to the community, the various communities, Longborough, I mean, Wagon Terrace, North Central, East Central, the East Side, and they went to all those different places more than once to explain to them exactly what was taking place, giving all them the opportunity to come and ask questions, to get involved in what's happening on Laurel Island, all those really affecting big time in East, in East Central. But I had them to go out to all the buttons, the community, the neighborhoods that's closer in proximity to that particular area, because it's going to affect them in some type of way with probably traffic or whatever the case may be. And all of this was done since day one. And I was working with these developments since day one, and they keep me abreast of all that's going on. This is, this is the area that I represent, so that's why I stay abreast of everything that's happening with Laurel Island. Even when Laurel Island was years ago, when it was becoming, when the gin company had owned it, and they wanted to do golf courses and things like that, and, and after the economy went sour, that went away. So now this particular island, they have done a whole lot of work on it with the, with the PUD that we have. They have a tremendous lot of affordable housing that's going to be there, and it's going to be there in, with the 10-year, actually on some, but perpetuity on others that we want to have. So I'm going to support it, and I think the developer is going to work in long with the city, as we doing. But Chip have done a lot of different changes in the PUD that we have asked him to do and submit in the PUD. So I think this is going to be a good, a good product that's going to happen. It's just that some people looking at what they cannot see right now, but this is going to be something advantageous to the city, and it's going to be, play a big part to the city, I believe. And I, I'm going to support it wholeheartedly. And I just hope my colleagues would go with, with me in supporting this project. This project is going to be a long, drawn-up procedure. I don't think a lot of us is going to be around before it's completed. I don't think I'm going to be around anyway, but when it's completed. But the community had a whole lot of time to get involved in this. The questions was asked. We tried to answer all the questions, even from the city's standpoint, asking, answering all the questions that they had and the, the problem that they see with the PUD. So we were doing all of this all the time since September, when this thing came a fourth, or even before. So I'm going to support the, the, I'm going to support the development of the PUD on Laurel's Island. So I'm just asking my colleagues to go. If they have questions, they can ask questions. But anytime anything comes in the district that I represent, I stay abreast of it, and I'm out there staying abreast of it with the developers to make sure that it's not going to be something to overrun the community or to hurt the community, that it stands now. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
For three and four?
The three and four.
All right.
I'll second it.
Second. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate all of the comments, and I, I, I think I need to maybe give a, not a rebuttal, but a reply to you. When you said that we had Mr. McQueeney's very thorough memo at the work session on October 7th, he actually wrote that email and dated it October 20th. So I, and I, I, I actually requested that we have that kind of, I called it the match between the act, the plan that the developer was proposing and intends to, to the best of their ability, bring forward onto Laurel Island compared to the ordinance, the PUD document that becomes the ordinance that dictates the future land use for, for the 196 acres. So I do think that it might be, I know it's going to take a little more time, but the, but Mr. McQueeney's memo was very helpful, I think, to help us appreciate that the PUD document is now in the shape that we would want it to be to pass on to the future leaders, as, as Councilmember Mitchell said. You know, a lot of us won't be here, but we definitely need to know that we've been good stewards of the intention and the dedication of what we expect will be, be built on Laurel Island as the years go on. So I would like, I, I personally have three areas that I drilled down on the most in, in comparing Mr. McQueeney's memo that highlighted to us the changes that were made in the, in the PUD document. And I do think in listening to the comments and, you know, talking to people offline, that I might be in the same lane with the people who are following along most closely in terms of knowing the ingredients for this, this development as it, as it proceeds over the next 20, 30 years, really come down to the affordable housing, the workforce housing that's being proposed. We have people tonight and people in our mail telling us that that's one of the main reasons they can support this, because we're going to help people live where they work on the peninsula. So I do think it would behoove us to look at the, at the mix of affordable housing. I have another comment to make about that later, but, so ask Mr. McQueeney to dedicate some time to that. Also, the mix of uses, and make sure that we're all clear that there is in the PUD document minimums that are, that are required, but they do not match the, the stated goals of the developer in terms of the mix of retail, commercial, hotel, and all of that. So I do think we need to be clear about that. And I personally have reservations about how the mix of uses can be changed. There's a conversion table, and it all is dedicated to basically a traffic analysis at the time that those mix of uses would want to be converted from retail to residential or hotel to residential. And I do think we need to be clear among ourselves what we're agreeing to in perpetuity unless there's a PUD amendment that would come before a future council. So that's another area I think that's, it's very hard to, you know, put on paper. So I'm not complaining about the quality of the work. It's just a very complex set of, you know, details that we're trying to nail down. And in a similar fashion, I think the open space is also something that deserves a little more explanation by Mr. McQueeney and, and anyone on the developer team that wants to talk about that. It too has a minimum that will be dedicated and cannot be changed without council approval, which I think is great. But the, but the way that it's coming on the chart, I think, is a little complex for, you know, future owners of the property. If somebody decides to come in and, and, and one thing that I, I can't see, but maybe it's there, and I'm just not reading it correctly, unlike the housing that says we've got to retain the housing that's being proffered to be affordable, and by, let's say, 2,100 units worth of houses are built, then have to see the full, full 20% of affordable units. There's no requirement that I can see in the open space, so I'd like to know what we can hold future developers' feet to the fire about bringing that open space into being in a timeline that we can all be happy about. So those are the three areas that I really, you know, think that the public has been mentioning to us, and I think it would take, you know, would, would benefit all of us to have Mr. McQueeney and the developers maybe speak to those details.
Thank you. Mr. McQueeney, do you want to respond to any of those three items before I call on the developer?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think her, her points are valid. I think it's just, I mean, I can, if there's anything I need to explain what's in there now, I'm happy to, but I think she was making points about what should be in there instead. Is that?
No, I, I'd like you to explain what's in there now, so we can agree that we expect and what we are willing to, you know, stand on, so.
Okay. On the, on the issue of open space, there's a minimum requirement of, I believe, 39.2 acres of what's called usable open space, which is high-ground open space that is, has active recreational uses. Under our zoning ordinance for a PUD, you can't move open space areas shown on the open space plan without a PUD amendment. So you would have to do that in order to move those open spaces as they're shown. And you'll see most of them just encircle the, the development itself. On the issue of, what, I, I apologize. What was the, what was the other clarification?
I'll just insert from Mr. McQueeney, because I'm, I'm looking at the section of 5.2 in the actual PUD document, and I think the minimum of 39 acres is the total of open space, not, not usable open space, which is a distinction that I think we should all understand. And the way that I read the document of that 39 acres, 9.8 has to be usable open space. Not the minimum that the developer can bring forward and stay within the boundaries of the current PUD document. Is that correct?
It says that, basically what it says is that the minimum requirement is 9.8 acres for usable open space, but that the, and I'm pulling up the actual document itself, but the developer is going to provide a minimum of 39.2 acres, and if the developer would like to reduce that amount, that the developer would have to request a PUD amendment, an amendment to the PUD. Right under the table is the verbiage explaining that. I apologize. I'm trying to pull up my documents right now.
Again, I think the minimum, and, and it says that on the table, under the total open space area, the minimum is 39.2. And then there's another little section of a table that says the minimum of usable open space is 9.8. So the way I tried to understand that was that of that 39.2, which is the total that we can require of a developer, even though they're expecting, and it uses that word, expected open space, is going to be 70 acres and 39 expected acres of usable open space. But expected is not what we can hold a future owner, you know, to. And so along with those minimums and how you get to that area of numbers that make up the minimum that we can, you know, require of an owner, then I would like to know if, if the owner has any answer to. Is there going to be a timeline required of bringing forward that minimum of 39 acres?
Okay. Let me call on Mr. Hellman to respond. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jackson, the, the language that you see that's in italics is, is there, and there's a note that Mr. McQueeney was pointing out right at the bottom that said, "References to minimum zoning ordinance requirements above are for information only." Those italicized provisions are there because the city's PUD ordinance sets forth certain minimums that have to be met, and those minimums, according to the city's ordinance, have to be provided in the PUD so that council knows what the minimum the ordinance requires is. Now, Laurel Island is going to have substantially more than the minimum ordinance requirements. The bold language that shows the fully developed expected usable open space of 39.2 acres is the amount that has to be built on Laurel Island. And if you go down to page 16, the next page, just the, the second full paragraph, it says, "Any increase," it starts with that, but it then goes on to say, "Any reduction in the fully developed expected acreage of the Laurel Island PUD open space or usable open space shall require a PUD amendment." In other words, to build less than 39.2 acres of open space, usable open space on Laurel Island, the, the Laurel Island Development Team, whoever that may be, as you point out, it could be very different, 30 years, whatever, to reduce that number requires a visit back to City Council. So it has to, it has to have 39.2 acres of usable space, which I point out is about four times the amount that the city actually requires per its PUD ordinance. It only requires Laurel Island to have 9.8 acres. So if, if you think about that, there's actually 31 acres that could be developed into uses other than open space, but for this PUD, it will be green usable open space. All right. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does. It does. I, um.
Mr. Hellman, do you want to respond?
I read the paragraph about the expected. the paragraph you just quoted, any increase and then any reduction. But so maybe my suggestion as a, you know, a future user of this document is we should not have the minimums in there. If I were a future buyer of this property, that would be sort of a confusing complication. And my my other question about the open space and Mr. Hellman is, dedicated timeline, a promise of when the open space will be delivered to the development?
It'll be developed as Laurel Island develops out. So over time, it'd be wonderful to be able to pick a timeline for that. But as we all know, in the times of COVID, you know, all of our best laid plans have been delayed and deferred. So as Laurel Island develops, the green space will get developed along with it. That could that could be over, you know, a short period of time, a long period of time. It really depends on how quickly Laurel Island gets developed. It would be disingenuous of anybody to establish a timeline and propose a timeline. And then whether it's the 2009, 2008, 2010, or it's what we have now with COVID and how that could slow things down, it it's going to be developed as Laurel Island gets developed. And that's what the PUD would require.
I guess I was thinking more along the lines of the way that the housing is is to be brought forward. As a percentage of what's built along the way, we'll see those 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 dedicated units. So is that not a reasonable way of talking about the open space?
Well, I and I had brought the Brian and I had discussed this, but one of my things was, number one, it's going to be, I mean, most of it's going to be open space if it's not usable open space until it's developed because it's all open space now or most of it is. But number two, when we talk about usable open space, it's going to be developed. It there likely will be use of TIF funds to develop it. And then it's got to be dedicated and accepted by the city, which is going to require the city to sort of be involved in the particulars of the both the pace at which we accept it and the the development pace, because we need to be ready to accept it and be able to maintain it. And I kind of I have said this before with this agreement, you know, a a PUD rezoning at best creates a two-year vested right and and that's arguable. A development agreement is what's going to, that's what vests a PUD for more than two years. That's that's a five-year vested right for a property this size, and it could get up to 10 years. The details of providing usable open space are really better and in the timeframe because of the city, the expectation that the city receive it and maintain it are really better addressed in the the development agreement, which which will include a an infrastructure improvements agreement that controls TIF funds. And that's really why we've left it out, you know, there were. One of my things was, let's go ahead and develop it as it as it comes forward, as you've mentioned. You know, so many number of units, this this amount is going to be developed. And the problem is the expense associated with the former landfill use of the site. So it's not just as simple as as sort of mowing, you know, mowing down trees and putting out soccer fields. There's a lot more to it than you would typically have. And that is a huge, you know, I people use the Daniel Island comparison all the time. That's a huge difference here. We don't, it's not a completely clean slate. The other difference is you don't have, because of the former landfill, you're unlikely to have single family detached or attached residences on the site like you do at Daniel Island. So you're not as concerned with your where your retail and office and town center are because it's it's an urban urban core area. And if you have retail office and multifamily housing, which I think is the plan, it doesn't, I don't know how much more detail you can get as far as I don't mean to go off on a tangent, but that's, you know, both of those are sort of Daniel Island things that don't make sense here.
I really appreciate that. And I do feel like that's the time we're starting to educate our public on the on the distinctions between a piece of property that, you know, has been an industrial site, now officially a brownfield, and is going to provide the kind of urban living that we heard citizens favorably comment on tonight. So I I I think this is a remarkable use of this land. I'm not disputing that. I'm just trying to clarify some of the things that I think citizens have, you know, told us are the value of this. So could could we just talk for one minute then about the the way that the mix of uses could potentially be converted? Can you explain what what you and Mr. Hellman worked out, Mr.?
Yeah, and this was this was existing in the agreement. I tried to clean up the wording to make it more clear what was going on. But the so the traffic impact study, which is like 300 pages of the document that's attached, but it's required under ordinance, concludes that PM traffic hour impact is going to be greater than AM impact. So that you're going to measure the impacts of the development by PM traffic hours instead of AM. And then you should cover AM as well, or AM will be better covered. So the idea is that as long as the traffic impact is neutral and the little the little chart allows you to convert from one land use to another fairly easily based on PM traffic count, which is based on that traffic study, impact study. So the idea is that you have neutral PM peak hour traffic impact, which should mean neutral AM peak hour traffic impact. You know, there's, it's called performance based zoning, and I don't know that we do it a lot, but it's 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 a it's a good thing to do and hopefully we'll do more of it in the future. You know, I've heard people mention that there should be other impact related triggers. And I think the problem with that is it is it's an island. I mean, it's not, you're not as concerned and I don't, you know, I'd have to defer to Matt Fountain on this. But, you know, as far as filling or or those types of things or flooding, it's not going to be like a development that's adjacent to an existing neighborhood. So you're not as concerned with those other impacts. I think traffic was the main one that that jumps out at everybody in this area for anybody who's traveled down this area from, you know, coming to work for the city of Charleston or within the city of Charleston.
Thank you, Mr. McQueeney. I need to move on to some other council members that want to be heard. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Appel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while Chip's wonderful observations are still ringing in the air, I want to just bring some more attention to them because he hit the nail right on the head. We have to understand how the various parts in this process work and how they interrelate to one another. We are talking about a zoning ordinance tonight. A PUD is a zoning ordinance. A PUD is not us, you know, getting out the models and figuring out exactly where things go and getting into technical design and all these different plans. That's that's for much later in the process, especially with a development agreement that any any developer embarking on a project like this is going to have to pursue. And that's where a lot of these details get worked out. This is, you know, and I mentioned in one of our other meetings when this was discussed. I mean, think about how broad and open-ended our normal zoning is. I mean, the the level of constraints and the level of protections and safeguards that are already built into this framework right now are not of, there's nothing like this in our default zoning ordinance. So there's already a tremendous amount of winnowing down of what we can expect on a property of this kind. And when you're talking about a development horizon decades into the future, there's no way you can sit here and say the office is going there, the the this is going over there. You just can't do that to this to that degree, although they do do that with the open space elements. So I just want to, as we discuss this and kind of decide whether to take final votes today, just let's just realize that that this is, you know, one step in the process. It's not the end of the process. PUDs get amended all the time. I was dealing with a PUD in Mount Pleasant, I think that's on its into its 20th amendment, you know, out there by the town center. So these things can be amended over time. You know, and I'll close with with this. I I sympathize and understand the folks in this community that are just very concerned about development. I've got family members that that are very concerned about development. They they drive through the cross town. They see all these apartments and these buildings, and it's not the Charleston they grew up in. And I understand that and respect that. But as we've talked about before, we've got a a decision to make as a city. Are we going to continue to sprawl out into, you know, Ravenel and up 61 and into Kane Hoy and all these places that we don't want to develop that are going to place additional burdens and difficulties on our infrastructure? Or do we want to grow like a city? This is what cities do. Cities grow in their urban cores around transportation arteries, around existing infrastructures, near where people work, near opportunities for economic collaboration. You know, if I could snap my fingers and live in the Charleston of the 1970s and 80s like my parents did, I'd do it. I get it. But at the end of the day, this is an exciting opportunity. There are a lot of jurisdictions around the country that would be, you know, over the moon for an opportunity like this. We're lucky that we're even in the cards for this kind of development. This is the exact type of development that you want to see in the 21st century. And I want to commend the developers and the team for for listening to the public and going back to the drawing board and making some tweaks to the overall proposal. I think they've done a great job. And this is not the end of Laurel Island. This is just the beginning. And it's going to be a long process into the future, and it's exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Dale Shoppe, did you have your hand up?
I did. I feel like I need a broom and a dustpan to sweep up how many times the name Daniel Island has been dropped. I proudly live in, it's the best place I've ever lived, and it tickles me every day that I get to represent this national award-winning plant, master planned community, Daniel Island, which is a giant PUD. And it and a PUD, like Ross mentioned, like Chip has mentioned, it sets some expectations. It's a zoning. And and we need to differentiate that from a development agreement. They are very different things. For example, the recreation center that's now being the City of Charleston Rec Center that's being constructed on Daniel Island is because of a amendment to the development agreement. So over time, it makes sense when you have a document that's 20 years old, it makes sense that you're going to have amendments as market factors change, things like that. And so it's important to differentiate the two. And I think when you look at something like Daniel Island and what this city and how the city and the developers worked together and the absolute magic that has been created out here, that is recognized around the nation, that gives me a lot of assuredness that this city will will do the same thing in other PUDs moving forward. And again, these are, these are much different animals. You talk Daniel Island where it's a lot of single family homes. You have affordable housing that is seamlessly integrated into Daniel Island. It is brilliant. The same thing will happen in Laurel Island. The same expectations will be set. But you do have a difference in that one is much more suburban. The other is much more urban. You can't plan the two the same. And I think that's where we're getting hung up. You know, when you're talking density versus, you know, thousands of acres spread out. So I'm with Ross. I'm with Councilmember Mitchell. I think this is the best use of this land. It's the smart path moving forward. We have to be more proactive in our development. There's places for more, you know, for more sprawl. There's other places where we need to build more dense. And this is what we're doing here. And I think it's a very wise move.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Councilmember Ware?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am. Listen, I'm going to yield the balance of my time to Councilman Appel. I think he laid out the case extremely well. When we think about even the peninsula, as historic as we are, the majority of historic district of the peninsula was developed without a plant, without a PUD, without a planning commission, as a matter of fact. And you know what? Those developers at that time didn't really do that bad. PUDs work. I've always been a big proponent of PUDs. The public gets more information from a PUD than anything. When somebody gets zone general business, they don't get the specifics on the GB that they do on the PUD. And what some people want out of this are specifics. And it's just unrealistic to expect that in the planning process of something of this magnitude. It's a great opportunity. Councilman Appel was right to have this opportunity, an urban core like this, which negates urban sprawl. There's a huge advantage and good advantage that I think our cities should take advantage of. And I'm a little in favor of this one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll be brief because there's been a lot of comments made. I just, I I want to, I want to speak to that whole idea of amending PUDs. We've been doing this a long time, and I've been a long resister of amending PUDs to the extent we can do everything on the front end. And I get it. You can't get every detail. But here is a perfect example of where PUD, the PUD and then the development agreement really are not in on a parallel track. And I heard Mr. McQueeney and it caught my ear and I'm wildly interested in it is the whole idea of traffic counts going on and off the island. One of the things that's still yet to be decided is how people are going to get on and off that island, right? I mean, what's going to happen? Are we going to build a bridge? Who's going to own that bridge? So this is a PUD of a different nature than I think anything we've ever seen. The development agreement that's going to come in the wake of it, and I'm not sure what the timing of that is, but we'll take it up when it comes, is going to have a lot of detail in it that at that point, I think, will really more set this in stone as to what it's all going to look like going forward. But the 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 traffic counts and the impacts on the areas around, we're not even to that point yet because ingress and egress, although sort of generally mapped out, is has yet to be determined. And so that's that's going to be a big part of of what we do going forward. So for those who haven't seen enough, there's going to be more to come on this. For those who think this is off to a good start, I see where the cards are going with this. We'll we'll get it moving. But there's still a lot of work to do on both sides of the coin, particularly from the city side when it comes to mobility on and off the track. Thanks.
Councilmember Shade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a few comments. And I remember as the city was being developed and these areas were coming across, even in over on Daniel Island, we've come a long way. We are dedicating a significant portion of this development to affordable housing. Not too long ago, when those of my colleagues who've been on this council longer than I have, that was like almost a dirty word. And there was so much pushback on including affordable housing in any projects and stuff. And it was it was not in my backyard kind of mentality, the folks who were pushing back and did not want this. So we've we've come a long way with this mindset. And so it's now the norm and it's pushing more for that. And we've heard a lot of talk about affordable housing in the peninsula and affordable housing in West Ashland and other parts of the city. But this project is going to incorporate part of that. And we've heard folks talk about defunding the police and generating more of our resources. But this is an exact project of doing that. So I'm glad that this is incorporated in it. The changes were made with affordable housing. And I did not want to go uncommented about what Ms. Cahill was was talking about regarding the the process and having people have their voices heard. And she's right to express that. And that was something that I had a concern of back way back in March and April, when we were doing the shutdown and we were trying to maneuver through these public healing ordeals that were having so that people had a voice in all this. And so it just could not go along without it being time to comment about it. Because that is our responsibility is to make sure that we do incorporate public input on these projects as much as possible. I'm going to vote for the project. I think this is a wonderful project. We're going to have more citizen inputs as we get into the weeds with this as time develops. But I just wanted to echo Ms. Cahill's comments along those lines and thank her and that organization for their diligence and looking over all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
A gentleman named Ben Lenhart, who actually signed on. He didn't specify which item he wanted to speak to, but apparently he did want to speak to this item, and he was on the line.
Okay.
If he's still out there, Mr. Lenhart, if you want to press star six, tell me yourself.
Mr. Lenhart? Mr. Lenhart, if you're there, hit star six. We'd be happy to hear from you.
He was on and wanted to speak.
Okay. Well, I don't hear him coming on. Mr. Lenhart? All right. Any other council member comments? Otherwise, I'd like to call the question. So we're giving second reading to item number three and then as a men- So we're giving second reading to item number three, and then as amended, number four. A final comment. Councilmember Jackson.
All right, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have one, one just detail thing under the workforce housing, section two-point-four. I understand that the twenty percent of units is being divided into two components. Ten percent will be dedicated permanently under that category of rental units that will be a price to work with an income of eighty percent or less. And then, then the other ten percent is going to work for the same income, income households. And, and the clock for those ten years will commence on the lease date for, for each such unit. I was wondering if maybe to clarify for a future owner that we should put on the first lease date of a unit, because it's not a rolling ten years. Once a unit comes online with its certificate of occupancy and is rented out for the first time, that starts the ten-year clock. But it doesn't say the first time a unit is leased. So I didn't, that was a detail that we should just insert a clarifying word there on the first lease date for each such unit. So that's my little.
All right.
And I, I too am going to vote for this. I'm not, I'm not bringing on these things that are going to hold back a vote. But I, but I, I wanted to appeal to the developers. I know that people have been asking for different terms for the temporarily subsidized units. Let's just call them that, the extra ten percent that's not permanent. And I was wondering if maybe the developers might go back and rethink their pro forma. We have, would make twenty percent of the entire property would be affordable to income earners in the less than eighty percent category. And if we're trying to do an urban development that, that works for a variety of residents of the city, I was thinking that maybe we could work out something where a part of that extra ten percent would go to income earners up to a hundred and eighty percent. And then maybe they would be able to extend the term so that we could have a mix of incomes and a longer term for that temporary group of subsidized units.
All right. Well, I hear you.
That's my request.
Say that a level of detail like that could also be reserved for the development agreement. So at this point, I'd like to call the question.
I think, I think, Gregory has hands up, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's okay, Mayor. Let's vote.
Okay. That's cool.
All right. For second reading of number three and number four amended, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now for third reading and.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. So next, we got number five, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir. Okay, back to the screen share here, and we will move on. Okay, E-five. This is the Magnolia Development, which is an existing planned unit development on the neck of Charleston. And this is a request for an amendment to amend sections related to net density, permitted uses and temporary parking standards, and to rezone a parcel of TMS four-six-six-zero-zero-zero-zero four-three, so it can be included in the, in the planned unit development. This is the Parker Marine site, which is roughly in this location here in the pud. If you all can see my cursor, of course, the whole pud is on the west side of King Street in the areas of Milford and Braswell, fronting on the Ashley River, south of the Rosemont neighborhood and north of Wagner Terrace. We have a couple other slides here that relate to the pud and the changes here, the aerial images of the pud's parcels. Then we have slides from the applicant. So on the left, you see the page from the old pud, and on the right, the page from the new pud. We've edited these down a little bit, but I did want to just zip through these so you all could see the difference in the pud with these amendments. So these are the different parcel owners now, based on the, the new ownership in the area and the difference in parcel acreages, based on the addition of the Parker Marine site. Then we have the old layout of the zoning, and now we have the pud on the site and the current HI for the Parker Marine, which will become part of the pud. And the overall developed area and the percentages, the various percentages for open space, of course, open space is thirty-eight percent of the area and usable open space is thirty-three percent. So again, just like Laurel Island, a very substantial portion of the site is usable open space. These are the development pods in the development, in the pud, and the overall unit counts that would be in the pud, which are the four thousand eighty development residential units, the one point zero five million square feet of office, the retail of two hundred thousand square feet, and the hospitality of a thousand forty units or rooms, as with these amendments. And then we have some of the zoning criteria that has changed from a very minor standpoint on the site. Then we have the permitted uses change to exclude things like casinos and to allow certain other uses, such as food trucks and temporary food services and a portion of the site, parking standards. And then the information on the outdoor parks and buffers, again, thirty-eight percent of the site is open space and thirty-three percent is usable open space. And stormwater management amendments. And the traffic study that, that looks at the streets that are leading in and out has slight adjustments here. And the Braswell and Milford streets, the, the, the type of street that they will be in the development have shifted, and so that's an amendment here. Here is the conceptual land use plan with these amendments, and of course, again, incorporating Parker Marine site here. The waterfront park area is intact and in fact expanded by virtue of the Parker Marine, allowing for the frontage on that portion of the Ashley River. And the overall height districts, as you can see here, a variety of, of heights, the greatest heights are the ones that are in the red. And then we have the street hierarchy, the more intense streets are towards the middle of the site. And then, of course, you have the bridge that leads into the site from the south, as well as the accesses to King Street from the east. And then some of the street sections that have some slight modifications to deal with the reworking of a couple of the streets up there. And these are all, again, in your overall pud packages. I'm happy to go back to any of these if there are items that folks have particular questions on. So here's the open space, and a lot of the concentration of the open space is on these waterfront park areas, which will, of course, be accessible from the bridge and also from the streets that come in off King Street, so they'll be completely publicly accessible. And the connectivity with the surrounding area from the east, to the east and to the south. And that's the end of their slides. And of course, this was at Planning Commission last month and had a recommendation of approval eight to zero in favor of these changes.
And the primary change is simply the addition of the Parker Marine property?
Yes, sir.
All right. So did anyone from the public sign up to speak on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have two people. The first is James Wilson. Mr. Wilson, if you're ready, I believe he's joining by Zoom.
I am, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is James Wilson with Longwood, Bon Dickinson. I'm here on behalf of the owner and developer of Magnolia Project. First, as you, most of you have probably seen, we're very pleased that the work is well underway at Magnolia. You've probably seen environmental remediation and site work that are in progress as we prepare for new streets and infrastructure that are being installed. So I'm very excited about being at this point with this project. What Mr. Morgan just described is exactly right. This is apropos of what you were, you council were just discussing. This is an amendment to an existing pud, but with a very good reason, which is the addition of the Parker Marine property. When this pud was preview, was approved back in twenty fourteen, it was missing that central waterfront piece of Parker. It's about seven acres that's now being added to this pud. And probably the most important thing is that that completes the waterfront, which the total park, public access, you know, public open space within Magnolia will be about twenty-four acres. This completes the waterfront continuous public access for the length of Magnolia, going down across the bridge to Wagner Terrace. Of course, adding the additional acreage, we're adjusting the density. In short, we're reducing the retail, adding more residential office, hotel space. Those are probably the highlights. And then just to hit on one other, obviously very important point, which is affordable housing. Since its inception, affordable housing has been a key part of the plan for Magnolia. The Magnolia Development Agreement, which of course exists, is in place right now. It requires fifteen percent of all residential to be workforce housing. And then also, under the development agreement, the developer is donating one point, at least one point five or more acres of land to the city in fee simple for the city's use for affordable housing. And of course, that's, and that's permanent, of course, I'll wrap up. We've, most of you have been very kind to speak to our team. And Councilmember Mitchell, of course, is in your district. Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Next is Stuart Coleman. And Mr. Coleman, I believe he's joining by phone. If you can press star six to unmute yourself.
This is Mr. Wilson again.
Stuart Coleman, I have no comments.
Okay, great. All right. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
That's all we had, and we did not receive any written comments or comments by phone on this item.
All right. So the matter comes to council.
Vote for approval.
Second. This is the first reading only. Any other questions or comments at this time? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Number six.
Okay, we will move on to those. Okay, E-six is a pud amendment to the Wando Village pud, which is in the Kane Hoi Peninsula area of Charleston. It's at five forty-six Riverman Trail and the intersection of Highway forty-one. It's a sixty-six acre pud. This is a relatively minor amendment to the pud. It's to allow for a sound barrier to be built adjacent to a portion of the property that is next to the newly modern and heightened Highway forty-one bridge in this area here, because of course, there's a new Highway forty-one bridge over the Wando River in that location. We have a couple of images to show you from that. Here again is the overall parcels that are involved in the pud, and here is the new bridge for Highway forty-one. And the property is again right here on this image. And we have a little bit closer view, and of course, you see the difference in the area once the bridge, when the bridge was much higher and overlooked some of the property necessitating need for the sound barrier and the wall. Here is a, a new view of June twenty nineteen. And here is the existing land use plan, and you see the reference made here, of a twelve-foot tall sound barrier wall in that location. There would be vegetation in front of it, so if you were coming down Highway forty-one, you would see the vegetation before you saw the actual wall itself, and it would be a masonry wall. And here's a little bit more of a zoom in on that. So staff has been very comfortable with this, and this was appropriate, given the change in the surrounding area with the new highway improvements, and we recommended for its approval. Here is info, information about the concrete material that we textured and blend with natural buffer. So we endorsed it, as did the Planning Commission with an eight to zero vote.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Brian Riley. Mr. Riley, if you're available.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Brian Riley with Thomason Hutton, hearing, representing the applicant. We appreciate staff's help with this, and you know, out of respect for your time, we won't add anything to Christopher's presentation. We thought he did a great job, but if you got any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, sir.
And that was all that we had.
All right. And the matter comes to council.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Guys, finally, number seven, Mr. Morgan.
Here we go. Oops. Here we go. And this is a recently annexed property on Pine Bark Lane in West Ashley. It was R-four in Charleston County, single-family residential, and would come into the city as SR-one, single-family residential in the city of Charleston.
Right. I believe that would be Mr. Waring's district.
No one has signed, no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
No public comment. It comes to council.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, the ayes have it. So that concludes our public hearings for this evening. Thank all those who participated. And Ms. Gadsden will be to you in just a minute. We'll let you go first with citizens' participation period about. So first, before we do that briefly, approval of city council.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Councilmember Sacran?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to ask the clerk if she has, a few people just texted me saying that they had signed up for public participation but weren't called. Just want to make sure she has their names.
And what, what are their names?
Emily Walter. Do you have that?
And we don't have Emily Walter. When did she sign up?
She had said she signed it up for the public hearing and was put on agenda item number one. I think she wanted to speak on the budget.
Mm-hmm. She signed up before noon today.
I don't know. How about Kari Lucas?
We, we will allow both of them to speak, I assure you, during public.
Perfect. Yes, that name is on citizens' participation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So without further ado, we'll go to our citizens' participation period. How many folks do we have, do we know about that are signed up?
So we have nine people signed up. And with the addition of Emily Walter, that will make it ten. So how, would you like to set a time limit?
Yeah, we'll keep, keep it at two minutes for this participation period as well. If I may ask, if you allow Ms. Gadsden go, to go first, since she had wanted to speak during the public hearing portion.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for this time. I'm speaking, I wanted to address the city's budget, and I am encouraging the city to move in a spirit of transparency and also listen, listen to grassroots organizers, not just myself, but those that I am in community with. And I want to stress a couple of points. I know that our city council might be more receptive to hearing cold, hard facts in the form of numbers. So I want to say that in Charleston and across the country, spending on law enforcement dramatically outpaces community services, such as housing and education. And we see that reflected directly in areas like downtown. Each taxpayer pays three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-one cents to the police department. Comparatively, youth and education programs receive a little over one dollar per capita. I really want that number to really sit with folks with that, with that point. The Charleston Police Department takes up almost twenty-five percent of the city's budget. To break that down, that's fifty-three million dollars. Comparatively, the Department of Housing and Community Development currently receives one percent of our annual budget. Twenty-five percent, fifty-three million. But housing gets one percent. That's untenable, that's, that's not sustainable. And I think it shows where our values are as a city, and I urge our council members to be more creative, be more progressive, be more just in how funds are allocated moving forward. We saw what happened this summer, and it wasn't just about broken glass. Your city, your citizens, your young people were crying out for help, and they were met with militarized vehicles, expensive. with militarized vehicles, expensive militarized vehicles. So I'm urging the council to please revisit this budget and keep the citizens, keep our youth, keep our, those who are housing insecure, keep them in mind as you make decisions regarding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Marcus McDonald. We actually called him for the first public hearing as well, but I'm not sure if he was on the line. I think his number is on the line now. So Mr. McDonald, if you'd like to go forward, if you could press star six. All right, moving on, Laura Ellison Fox. Ms. Fox, if you would like to speak, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. Joshua Walker. Mr. Walker, if you're on the line, if you could unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I want to speak to the budget. In the budget itself, the city describes itself as a city that embraces change. And I urge you all to kind of embrace this philosophy as we move forward with the twenty-twenty-one budget and our ten-year plan. I think it's important to realize that, you know, where we spend our money is a true reflection of our priorities as a, as a city, as a community. I'm a small business owner, I have multiple businesses, and I lived downtown for ten years here in Charleston. You know, I know, I realize it's under, you know, it's important to maintain the status, it's an important tourist destination, but I, I really think the focus must be more on serving our citizens better. I know that this is, the city budget is an enormously complicated endeavor to manage. And I know that whenever we look at changing it, it's in our nature to say, hey, where would the money come from? But, you know, make no mistake, I've done some, some kind of small dives into the budget, and I, and I'm confident there's plenty of room for improvement, and that we take the time to focus on that improvement. For twenty-twenty, the budget alone, you know, we're spending three million dollars on new LED lights at Volvo Stadium. You know, we're spending over twelve million dollars alone just on recreation projects on Daniel Island. You know, the police department, I know that's a huge focus with a lot of groups. I think the budget as a whole should be a focus, but just with the police department, you know, listen, we're spending three-point-two million dollars in the past two years just on brand-new cars. You know, six million dollars in the past four years just on brand-new vehicles. You know, with, you got to contrast this with the fact that the, the city youth budget has an operating cost of only fourteen thousand dollars. Like, this, this is a reflection of our priorities. So I just really want to urge you guys to take this to heart, really embrace the concept that we can always learn more, we always have to adapt to be better human beings. I think this year is a perfect example of this. And I really urge the city council and the mayor kind of harness all this energy and that has come from this adversity and to like, really truly kind of create this is an opportunity for betterment for all citizens. You know, Mayor, I, I also talked to you about the fifteen percent property and tax increase that we're facing as restaurants. I hope to hear back from you on that. Again, I would just like to say, better engagement, better transparency, you know, the fact that, the fact that I've waited, you know, an hour and forty-five minutes on the phone, just, just to say my piece is, is an example of how we all can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman.
Next is Karen Beard. And Ms. Beard, if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute.
This is Karen Beard, can you hear me?
We can.
Please proceed.
Can you, can, okay, thank you. I'm speaking for the Charleston Coalition of Wireless Safety Standards. We want to thank Ms. Herdina for giving a balanced assessment of the current national and local small cell facility situation at the Public Works meeting last night. Ms. Herdina stated that the experts on both sides of the fiveG safety issue have researched to show either that non-ionizing radiation is harmful to human organisms or that it is not harmful. It has become a battle of experts, as she said, and we agree. But we know that eventually one of these sets of experts will be proven correct. It may take many years, and during that time, our children will grow to adulthood. We in Charleston must do everything that we can do to protect our growing children now in case the set of experts who have evidence that non-ionizing radiation is harmful to organisms is proven correct. We are reading the recently passed South Carolina Small Cells Facility Law, and we may be able to provide additional requirements of those applying for site locations. We also have a short list of requirements we have found in our research that are being imposed across the nation. We will submit those lists to you in a council mail-out, and we urge all those involved in making the decision to approve permits, small cell permits, consider applying these requirements to each small cell application, especially in our neighborhoods. Thank you, council and mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beard.
Next is Shaquille Fontenot. And if he is on the line, if he could press star six.
Hey, it's Shaquille Fontenot. Hey, Mayor and City Council members, I am Shaquille Fontenot, a member of the Low Country Action Committee and the People's Budget Coalition. I'm calling in to discuss an egregious breach of trust between the city and its residents. The same city which benefited and continues to benefit from the import of enslaved Africans is the same city constantly ranked number-one city in the U.S., but who is it number-one for? Because it's also a place where twenty-seven-point-six percent of residents face shelter poverty, and in a year where our city is facing a deficit of almost forty million dollars, departments and services should prioritize that provide a better quality of life for our residents. And resources have been directed towards overpolicing in response to uprisings following the deaths of George Floyd, but I want to mention that people just don't wake up one day and say, I want to smash up stuff downtown and cause a ruckus. This is a result of a systemic effort to displace residents, remove educational and life-affirming resources from them, and uphold the status quo of policies that encourage economic and environmental exploitation. These outcomes are a natural result of a system of inequitable policies which has always governed our city, and people are dying and being displaced, but God forbid we can't find someone who threw a brick in an empty building. Evidence shows that police do not make a safe, funneling police into communities of color and pushing officers to make arrests perpetuates harm and trauma, and there are massive disparities in funding that perpetuate racial injustice in our city that have done so since slavery. And it was mentioned earlier by several people that each taxpayer pays around three-hundred-and-forty dollars to the police department, yet youth and education programs get a little over a dollar. Imagine the type of Charleston we could have if we allocated just nine percent of that fifty-three million dollars the Charleston Police Department receives and supply affirming community programs and services. The People's Budget Coalition is requesting an increased police accountability and a civilian police accountability council in addition to a five-million-dollar reallocation of police budget. So let's focus on the plight of the people instead of the preferences of tourists who shuffle in and out of an adult Disneyland to go to CBD shops to get the same plant that the Charleston Police arrests black people for at a rate of seventy-seven-point-five percent. And I urge the council to choose knowledge and invoke empathy to make Charleston more equitable and sustainable when reviewing the budget this year. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Next is Kari Lucas.
Yes, my name is Kari Lucas. I am also with the Low Country Action Committee and the Budget Coalition. I want to echo the request for transparency through the process of approving the budget and also echo the request for a five-million-dollar reallocation from police. It's already been stated that the police department takes up almost twenty-five percent of our budget. According to the Vera Institute, Charleston spends twenty-two percent of its budget on policing, while Virginia Beach, which is a city with over three times our population, spends only nine percent on its budgeting. This is clearly under the guise that the police keep people safe. However, police, it's under the guise that police keep people safe from crimes. However, policing experts have noted that there is no correlation between the number of police and the rate of crime in a place. However, we do know that overpolicing actually pushes officers to make more arrests and perpetuates harm and trauma. Between nineteen ninety-seven and twenty sixteen, the number of police officers for every hundred thousand residents dropped by nearly ten percent, and the violent crime rate dropped by thirty-seven percent. For the past five years in Charleston, only ten percent of arrests involve serious threats of violence, while ninety percent are for nonviolent offenses. And since twenty fifteen, there have been more arrests for marijuana possession than there have been for all violent offenses combined. Further, the city of Charleston has publicly demonstrated what appears to be a commitment to racial justice and change, establishing the Special Commission on Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Reconciliation and removing the statue amongst other things. However, if black citizens in our city are not safe from issues such as displacement, lack of housing, overpolicing, et cetera, then you just have a commission with a really big name that doesn't do anything and a lot of optics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time as well.
Next is Christopher King. Mr. King?
Yes, good evening, Christopher King, Preservation Society. I just want to quickly comment on an issue that came before Ways and Means. Wonder, let council know that we appreciate the creation of the task force to study the smokestacks, but we have not heard anything from the city to this point, and we feel that we're losing valuable time. Additionally, we were surprised to see a two-hundred-thousand-dollar contract with the engineering firm come for approval to Ways and Means. And why would you be asked to approve this before allowing the task force to even have its first conversation or consider the due diligence that is needed here? It just continues to feel as though the city is driving towards demolition and preventing the due diligence from being done, and we urge you to not lock yourself into a contract, particularly of this magnitude, until the due diligence is able to occur. Also, want to quickly speak to the amplification on carriages. We were surprised to see this on the agenda, and just want to urge you all to understand that these tours take place in neighborhoods where people live, and we feel that this would be incredibly intrusive on the quiet enjoyment of the residents. We are very concerned about this and urge you to please not approve it. And then lastly, on the ordinance preventing the handing out of free samples, we applaud this effort. We've spoken with many businesses and King Street property owners who are strongly in support of this. We've heard numerous stories about how the predatory sales practices are really hurting the adjacent businesses, but also the character of King Street. As a King Street property owner and retailer, we urge you to support this ban for the betterment, betterment of the residents, visitors, and shoppers. As we all know, King Street desperately needs your help, and this is a positive step, and so we appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Anna Pandos. If you're on the line, if you could press star six.
Hi, I'm Anna Pandos, and I'm representing Alana Dickinson, the owner of a few of the vendors on King Street that hand out samples. We are concerned about our company's success. We understand the concerns about the business practices that are deemed aggressive and predatory. However, this sampling is important to our business model, and in the cosmetics industry, we need to be able to interact with customers on the street so that they have the ability to feel the product, and passing out samples is important to introduce them to the market. We're more than happy to talk further with you and recognize a less aggressive approach, and we can make a happy medium somewhere. However, I hope you understand the financial strain that this holds on our business.
Thank you very much.
Next is Sully Sullivan. And if you're on the line, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. And last, we have Emily Walter. Ms. Walter, if you are on the line, if you could press star six.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Hey, Emily. Okay. Great, awesome. Hi, thank you guys so much, and thank you, Jason, for allowing, for lifting up that we signed up to speak tonight, I appreciate that. So I'm coming to council tonight regarding the twenty-twenty-one budget. However, I'd first like to acknowledge the lack of transparency and accessibility of this public hearing to residents of Charleston. I'm curious to know how the city defines public hearing, although I am admittedly new to the budget process, does not seem productive or fair to have a hearing on legislation that is not even published online yet. In a time of great need, the desire for transparency is paramount. The accessibility and publicity of the twenty-twenty-one budget must be improved by city officials. I'm confused about the point of having a public meeting at all if there is no true intention of engaging the public. Beyond individual arguments of budget priorities and what we value as a city, the very least that Charleston could do is to authentically engage constituents about where their own taxpayer dollars are going. Fisting back to budget priorities, the current definition of public safety in the city of Charleston is not only extremely limited but actively causing harm to residents of the city. The data collected by the People's Budget Coalition leaves no doubt about this. Black citizens of Charleston are being arrested at significantly higher rates than white citizens. This is true when all charges are considered commens- criminally, but also the most dramatic when considering certain lower, lower-level charges. Despite making up roughly one-quarter of the population, black people compromise startingly high percentages of their arrests for marijuana-related offenses, as well as charges for driving under a suspended license and a host of other minor charges. Perhaps most unsettling is the dramatic disparity in arrests between black and white youth under the age of eighteen. Furthermore, through an analysis of how police spend their time in the city, it bears repeating, in the past five years, there have been more arrests for marijuana possession than all violent offenses combined. Police respond to crime, they do not prevent crime. They simply respond when there is a lack of resources, when people don't have what they need. By allowing CPD to take up units of affordable housing, for example, in Gadsden Green apartment complex, this does not make the residents of that, of that area any safer, it just increases the amount of overpolicing in that community, and it adds to racist displacement and continued gentrification of Charleston. If Charleston's goal is to actually keep people safe, then we must finally do away with the myth that policing is the best way to do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfman, appreciate it.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to call out two names that were called earlier. Laura Ellison Fox, if she is on the line, could she press star six to unmute herself? All right, next is Marcus.
Hello, I'm so sorry, I, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Got you, hey, Lauren.
Hi, Mayor, how are you?
Great.
Thank you for, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address the sampling ordinance that is in front of council tonight. As the Chairwoman of the Central Business District Improvement Commission, I urge council to defer voting on this ordinance. As a local attorney, I, I think that we can craft something that will reflect the interests of the majority of King Street business owners, as well as help protect some of the businesses that do rely on sampling on the peninsula. So I, I think that there is work that can be done to reach a happy medium, but I think that the ordinance as written could be detrimental to our businesses and our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Marcus McDonald.
Marcus?
Hello, it's Marcus, I'm Charleston Black Lives Matter, just reaching out. I'm not going to rehash what a lot of my other folks who are in the People's Coalition have been saying, but I do want to reiterate some anecdotes that I've been hearing from the community. As they said before, the police do not make communities more safer in this overpolicing, it's just a drastic thing that we've been seeing happen over and over again without really looking at the real issues. And just from my experience working with youth programs in the Gadsden Green area and also on the east side, I've seen that severely underfunded. So if we really want the safety of our community, we would put more money into these programs and prioritize black children and black youth so they have these, the ability to do things other than crime and be, be able to transition in ways to make themselves better and pursue careers and different job opportunities. So like I said, I'm not going to rehash what people were saying before, but not only is it coming from our coalition, but the community is asking for this. Mr. Jones out on the east side has been asking for this. He said before so many times that he often gets overlooked when it comes to a lot of these opportunities that are given out to the city, and even in Gadsden Green, that are putting this police station in there, when the citizens and a lot of the communities there have been passing out surveys saying that, of course, they really want the shootings to stop, and they want on the violence to stop, and they want to be more safe, but they also have issues that are never really addressed because the city just ignores them. For example, the flooding and the bugs in their houses. You want to build a new police station in the middle of the project, but you don't want to fix the housing that's already there, and that's just shameful that y'all would try to just overpolice and try to coerce people into making that part of their neighborhood where you don't even want to fix some of the issues they've been asking for for several years now. So I just want to speak for those communities and just say that I'm, I urge you all to real, reallocate five million dollars of this budget, um, to the police department, to some of these programs, because these communities really need it, and these kids really need it. And Latonya from the east side, and anybody else really shouldn't have to do all this fundraising if there's all these funds available, because a lot of times they've had, been having to do the stuff on their own. And as a city, we need to really build up and kind of up these young black folks and build their futures, and that's my time. Thank you so much, City Council.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, appreciate that.
And we did have some comments that we received, Mayor. We had two people that opposed allowing voice amplification by tour guides on horse carriages unless it's verified for medical reasons. We had two people that opposed allowing voice amplification by tour guides on horse carriages unless it's verified for medical reasons. Fifteen people were in support of Charleston Coalition for Wireless Safety Standards. Four people are against the CPD taking over affordable housing units in Gadsden Green to form a substation. And one person is against adding more hotels, apartments, and condominiums. And that was all that we had.
Wait, did we miss anybody? I think not. Well, thank you, Madam Clark, for, for organizing all that and letting us know. I feel like we had a robust participation from the public tonight with both our public hearings and public participation. Period. I want every, thank everybody for sharing their thoughts and their time with us. So next is our approval of appointment for the Tourism Commission. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
I, I just have one question, Mayor. Are there, are there any more vacancies or coming up, uh, any more reappointments or any other vacancies coming up? Are we aware of?
Yeah, there are two more, and, um, I'm seeking, um, some, some neighborhood representation. And, uh, we'll come back to council at the next meeting with two more appointments for this commission.
Okay, I, because I have some folks who may be interested, and I just want to make sure that, uh, we can have a discussion about that. Thank you.
Submit any, uh, suggestions to me, please.
Yes, all.
All in favor of those listed here tonight, please say aye.
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 Do you oppose? Uh, next is a discussion, um, presentation, uh, by Meg Thompson, who's Director of Business and Neighborhood Services on our Central Business District Improvement Commission that has been meeting, uh, quite regularly. They met weekly for a while. Now they're to every other two weeks. Council members, uh, Mitchell and Seekings have been a part of that, and, um, they have some recommendations for us this evening. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the time tonight. As always, I promise to be brief, um, with my report here. As the mayor was saying, the Central Business District Improvement Commission, um, was formed over the summer and has been meeting since mid-August. Um, and just as a reminder, the mission of the commission is to assure the long-term economic vitality of King Street and the surrounding commercial area. And they are to do so by considering and recommending policy and program changes to you all that will better, um, the district. Um, as Mayor said, I do want to thank the commission members, including the mayor and Councilmember Seekings and Councilmember Mitchell. You heard from, uh, Lauren earlier. Um, I also want to thank the honorary commission members, um, Councilmember Del Chapo and Councilmember Appel, who have also made it a point to attend those meetings when they're able. Thank you all so much for your time and dedication. Like the mayor said, this is a very passionate group, um, that has been working very hard for the district. Um, so why did we form this commission is what I kind of want to spend a little bit of time on this slide with. So this graph is taken from Placer data, which is a data platform that we use that tracks, um, basically foot traffic. You draw a square around an area, and they can track the number of mobile phones that go in and out of an area. Now, I want to assure you, this is all perfectly fine and legal. No personal data is shared or anything like that. But it does give an idea about the activity in a certain area. So this graph shows in blue the foot traffic for King Street in 2019 and in red for King Street for 2020. As you can see, in the first couple of months here, there is a pattern to King Street. There is a regularity to the foot traffic. And then in March, obviously, that pattern was broken. Um, and if you look at this graph, it looks a little bit like a heart monitor. Um, and you can see where the, kind of the heart of our downtown flatlined essentially for three months. Um, it started to pick back up over the summer. Um, the events of May 30th are right around in here. Um, and then things proceeded to get better and better until right about here, where you can see the blue line really dips for 2019. That was a hurricane in September. Happened to also be the same weekend that we finally broke 20,000 visits. Um, we had not broken that since March, and you can see that the lines are starting to merge over the past two months, um, to the point where we're even exceeding a, on a couple of days, um, in a given month. But this dip here is hard to recover from. Um, and that has been a lot about what the commission has spoken about during their work. So their timeline for their work is this summer and the fall. They have been working very hard to develop a work plan, um, to execute this winter and early 2021. The idea of getting a lot of these projects in place for the holiday shopping season, because it is very key to this district, and then be able to assess that work, um, next year. So going through a very intense process, the group identified a list of issues for the district that they would like to see addressed. Um, and eventually decided to split that list into two halves. So the first half is the safety and appearance, and they decided that that was the list that needed to be addressed first, because the feeling that if the street wasn't clean and safe and beautiful, there was really no point worrying about the rest of it. So for each of those items under safety and appearance, we've been through this, um, equation, for lack of a better word. We have worked to define the problem and understand the constraints. And then tonight, we are working to get the responsible, responsible parties on board and secure the required resources so we can implement a response. Now, obviously, that's where you come in. The group as a whole has met with representatives from each of these departments, sometimes multiple times, as well as outside stakeholders like Dominion Energy, CBB, and the College of Charleston. I want to thank the city departments that have met with the group so far, um, who, who have all also reviewed the report that you guys all have in your pocket that shows the detailed recommendations that the group has put forward. Now, most of those are staff actions that, um, the mayor and I have discussed with those department heads that we would like to move forward with. But there were a couple of key requests that I wanted to pull out for you all, since it is budget season. Um, one of those being making sure that Streets and Sidewalks Division has an adequate repair budget for the Bluestone. That's proven to be a key issue as we've looked at the district. And making sure, um, that Housing and Community Development has the staff to have outreach workers on the street. The impact of Christopher Jordan and Talia Rice has been great, but we need more. So they've made additional staff requests of you all that the group hopes you will support. And while we are super eager for your endorsement of these recommendations, we have also made progress on other items. Um, for anything from getting that Bluestone repaired inventory and work done to looking ahead towards that second half of the list of strategic vision. The mayor has already mentioned that the farmer's market is back. We're doing research into parklets and food trucks and work that we can do with the Riley Center. Um, so we're very excited about the work to come, um, and we'll be reporting those out when we are able. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Uh, Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, and, uh, I really do appreciate the work y'all have been doing on this. And, um, a lot of thank yous to those who are serving on it. Just one question, one of my, um, things I've seen happening on King Street, and I don't know if this was ever up for discussion, where you got like trash collection, litter removal. Don't talk about deliveries, uh, particularly, as they are, in the disruption it has on traffic.
That, that has been a conversation that I've had with merchants previously. That has not been a hot topic for this group.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? So I would also like to thank, uh, Meg and, and the commission members for their service. They really have been working hard. And the staff of the various departments who've been responding so well, uh, to keep, take care of the ABCs of, uh, taking care of our central business district. I think it's, uh, making a difference already. For example, in one area of King Street, we, we noted that the, um, light poles were after 20, 25 years were looking a little, a little ragged. So, um, Parks Department, uh, got them all painted, and it makes them look, look so much nicer, and, uh, cleanliness is up a notch, and we're working on so many different efforts. So, um, uh, point well taken, Meg, for the two budget items, particularly to make sure, uh, we're able to take care of the sidewalks and to, uh, hopefully add another homeless coordinator outreach person to add to the one, uh, the staff that we have already. That's a continuing problem in the central business district. But we'll deal with those, um, when we get to, to, uh, budget deliberations. And for right now, I believe we just receive, uh, this as a report, uh, for information. Thank you so much, Meg.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add something really quickly, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Seek.
I, I, I just want to echo the thanks to Meg and her team. They've worked really hard. For those of you who are not on this commission slash committee, it meets on Friday afternoons from 3:30 to 5:00. And we, but Meg has actually done a good job of bringing it back to 4:30. But we have, we have beyond 100% participation. We have 100% plus, as Councilmember Del Chapo and Councilmember Appel often call in. So, um, it, it just shows you how important the mission of looking at and improving as many things as we can on King Street is to that group. And, um, I will tell you, if something comes out of that commission to this council, it will have been very, very well vetted and heavily debated. So, um, with that, I just want to thank you, Meg, and thank everyone who's really put a lot of time, a lot of time into that commission.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. So moving on, um, we have a report from our Health and Wellness Advisory Committee as well. And, uh, Dr. Susan Johnson will be making a presentation to us. Uh, the, the, uh, committee approved, um, a recommendation to council, basically that we consider health in all the decisions, uh, that we make. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you so much, Mayor, and, uh, council members. I appreciate the time this evening to be able to give you an update on our, on our current work. Um, as you all know, we spend a lot of time focusing on, um, health equity, and in particular, making sure that we have policy systems and an environment in place to support the health of all of our citizens. Um, and we recognize, uh, from our committee that there are many factors beyond healthcare that influence and impact a person's health and well-being. So we really use this social determinants model, uh, to guide our work. Um, we, we recognize that the places where people live, learn, work, play, and age influence our health. And it influences us through social and economic opportunities, uh, resources available in our homes and neighborhoods and communities, now quality of schooling, um, efficiency and reliability of transportation, safety of our workplaces, access to healthy, clean food, water, and air, and the, um, social interactions and relationships that support total well-being. So with that, we have been, um, investigating and exploring initiatives that will help us, um, really bolster, um, health equity in our community and make sure that we are considering, um, the, the health and well-being of all of our citizens in, in the great work that we do. Um, the Health in All Policies is an initiative that has been promoted, uh, through the World Health Organization, uh, through the CDC, and in many communities across our country. Um, California in particular has adopted it statewide. Uh, so we've spent a, a good amount of time over the past year really, um, doing our due diligence around this, uh, this model and, um, looking at whether we felt like it was a good fit for our community and, uh, to benefit our citizens. And, uh, we believe that the, uh, Health in All Policies approach, um, will help support our efforts. Um, require, it will provide us with innovative solutions, a new policy paradigm, and structures that break down the kind of natural silos that prevent us from being able to achieve our goals, um, around health equity. So how does Health in All Policies work? It is, um, by nature, um, a collaborative process. So basically, it's pulling together, um, stakeholders and community members across all neighborhoods, across sectors, and across all policy areas. And the, the ask is that we, um, in all of our conversations and decision-making, keep, um, good health at the top of everyone's mind. Um, it raises awareness of social determinants, which, as I said, is really a model that we use, um, in, in deciding which initiatives, um, are our best practice. And it helps communities develop methods to reduce health barriers, um, encourages, um, new partnerships to promote health. And it helps us really, gives us a framework to analyze any proposed policies, plans, programs, and projects from a, a health lens and looking at the potential impact on health, both positive and negative. Um, and so with that, in the core of this framework, we would involve, um, health and non-health organizations, our communities and, um, neighborhoods. We would look at all of the key health issues that we're facing as a community. Uh, we would certainly, um, consider local rules, laws, and policies, um, and looking at our national partners as well as local and regional, and really primarily focus on those health disparities. Um, we're really want to make the point that this is, um, not meant to force sectors to prioritize health first over other metrics, um, or priorities, um, such as cost or environment. But it's meant to encourage, again, all stakeholders to, um, use a lens of, of health and elevate health in consideration of all decisions. Uh, we have really given a lot of thought as to how to kind of phase in this approach. And we believe that a good starting point would be for us to consider, um, health it through the, uh, the health lens in, um, considering the city health plan. Uh, we have looked over the 10 key elements, and we've compared it to the social determinants of health, and we feel like there are a lot of opportunities, particularly because the, um, the plan involves community engagement, and it also involves all of the, uh, decision-makers and different, um, bodies of the, of the Charleston city government, so we, government. So we feel like this is a really great place for us, um, to start in, um, examining this, this approach. We also believe that, um, the, the most, what is the driver for us are, um, outcomes, health outcomes. We've been really focusing on selecting initiatives and focusing our efforts on things that we feel like we can actually move the needle on health outcomes. Um, and so certainly, life expectancy in our communities. Um, if you look at the, on the right-hand side, um, we are below the national average. And then if you look specifically on the left-hand side, um, in certain communities within our city, uh, we have a lot of work to do. So we believe that this Health in All Policies approach can help us to really start to shift these numbers and move us in the right direction. So at our last, um, help, City Health and Wellness Advisory Committee meeting, which was held on October 7th, um, the, uh, we reviewed all of the research and all came to a consensus that we wanted to move this forward. And so we passed a motion, um, to ask the City Council of Charleston to consider a Health in All Policies, Policies approach in the development and implementation of the 2020 Charleston City Plan. And in doing so, would consult with the Advisory Committee and other relevant committees as they take this Health in All Policies approach. Uh, so to summarize, we are, um, I'm here to represent our Health and Wellness Advisory Committee and asking the City Council to approve our, um, Health in All Policies motion. And, um, looking forward, uh, we would expect if this is approved that our committee would form a subcommittee. We've already started kind of moving in that direction to develop the framework and guide this approach. Um, and ultimately, um, to really have the most impact, we, we may at some point want to even consider some type of resolution, um, to prioritize this, um, across all aspects of, um, the city of Charleston. But for the short term, we are looking to just have your approval on our motion and, um, so that we can begin, um, building out that framework. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Shealy, who also serves on the Health and Wellness Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tekkenberg. Whoop, am I muted? No, I'm okay. Okay, good.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, and thank you, Dr. Susan Johnson, for that report. You know, I feel very fortunate that I'm on the Health and Wellness Committee, and I appreciate the time that we've gotten from top health experts from all over our area, that, um, they give a tremendous amount of time to our committee. Um, most of you know we have experts from MUFC, from Roper, DHEC, um, the Charleston County School District, the Citadel College of Charleston, Department of Mental Health, um, FEDER. Of course, we have our own city health experts. Paul's on the line, probably Jan as well. Um, and, um, many other private health professionals are on this committee. And, um, I just feel like we should take advantage of the partnerships that we have, um, with obviously some of the top health. with obviously, some of the top hea- health experts, probably anywhere in this area and, and maybe even in the southeast. But y'all saw the life expectancy chart just now that came out and how different it can be from one area to another. And, you know, I feel like it's very important for us to have health considerations in decisions that are made on City Council and that we have healthy public policy. So I want to support this and I want to make a motion that we approve. The motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Seaking, who also is on the Health and Wellness Committee.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, just briefly, I know the hour's late, but thank you, Susan, Dr. Johnson, for coming on and giving us that report. You know, a healthy community is just that, healthy in, in every way, shape, and form. If you've all have ever been to the Healthy Business Challenge that the city participates in, you will see how, how health in the everyday lives of people from beginning to end can be transformative. It's been a locally-based, very successful program. And to translate that into our policies going forward, really, to me, is, is a no-brainer. You all may remember that last year, the Surgeon General of the United States came to Charleston and gave a series of lectures. And at the center of all of his comments was health equity. And, and the, the map that Susan put up in her presentation is one that always gets my eye whenever it's put up and it's put up regularly at our Health and Wellness Committee meeting. And that is how we have such disparate health equities here in this region. And we need to do something about that. And, and it starts right here with us. And so as we build all of our policies, Mayor, going forward, I think health and health equities have got to be the center of it. And, and boy, if there was ever a time to really be thinking about it, it's now. So kudos to the committee. Councilmember Shealy's been a really active member. Susan and her team, it's really been eye-opening to all of us, I think, to learn from different angles. It's another one of those committees that the partition, participation level is super high and engaged. And so I would advise all of us to listen closely when the committee speaks and to take their advice when they give it to us. And right now, they're giving us some advice, so I think we ought to take it. So with that, I'll turn it back and say thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I, I mean, I, I think it's a no-brainer with all the work that we're trying to do with action-oriented recommendations coming out of our Commission on Equities, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation. So I was just curious, do you, do you work at all with Dr. David Rivers? He's, he is chairing the Health and Wellness Committee of the Commission on Racial Conciliation. So hopefully, you can find your synergy and connections.
Yes, absolutely. That was, as we started to discuss next steps after we passed the motion, we have identified some key stakeholders, so we will definitely be reaching out. Thank you.
Absolutely. We, we connected them right away, both, both of these, the committee and the commission. And I want to thank the commission as well. They've been a remarkable resource this year during COVID-19. And thank also staff, Paul Weeters, who's been kind of managing the committee for, for some time, and he does a terrific job. So anyway, without further comment, we'll ask, I'll call the question on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Repose, the ayes have it. Thank you, Susan, so much for, for, for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
So that ties right into our update on the city's response to COVID-19. And with council's permission, we'll take kind of four and then seven together because they're both updates from staff. And then we'll call on Susan to lead us on the matters that we need to take action on this evening. So if I may, call on Tracy McKee. Tracy, are you out there to give us a update? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Pull up the slideshow here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I, I'm sorry, I don't have Dr. Sweat with me tonight, so you, so you only get me. But I'll try to keep this pretty brief. Tonight, I'll start with the bad news first, I guess. So this chart actually shows the daily new cases in the U.S. since the start of the pandemic. Over the past few days, you can see the U.S. has twice hit daily record highs of new cases. And this chart shows the seven-day moving average of new COVID cases of the top 10 most affected countries. The U.S., which is actually in green here, we look to be leading the way. This graph doesn't actually normalize the data for population. However, the U.S. currently only trails Belgium when you look at cumulative cases that are normalized for population and the start of the outbreak. So I know some of you look at our dashboard, particularly Councilmember Shealy. I know he's commented a number of times. So I thought it was really important to kind of alert y'all to an impending issue in case you all see some changes here soon. Yesterday, we received notification from DHEC that they would be disabling public, public access to the ZIP code level data that powers our dashboard. We've been told that access will be terminated tomorrow, October 28th. So we had just a day to really process that. I personally hope, you know, that they will reconsider their position. But we will be filing a data use agreement with DHEC to hopefully gain continued access. I just don't expect that to be instantaneous, so we may see, may see a pause in that service. So until that agreement is reviewed and accepted, you can expect our dashboard to be down at least temporarily. And of course, if our access, if our request for access is denied, we'll obviously need to pivot and adjust our data-driven approach to opening city offices, facilities, and services. So that's, that's kind of the scenario that we are in right now with the dashboard. Hopefully, hopefully, things will resolve themselves over the next few days and I'll have something positive to report another couple of weeks when, at the next meeting. So this is an updated chart of weekly cli- weekly cases in Charleston city ZIP codes, Charleston County cases, and Charleston County tests that have been performed. At the city ZIP code level, cases have been increasing slightly since early September and then showed a slight decrease actually over the past seven days. And Charleston County continues to show a slight upward trend over the same timeframe. So this chart shows our rolling seven-day average of cases per 1,000 and the infection rate. Hold on, actually, sorry, this one. I skipped one. And the dash line actually shows our tolerance for staying in the green zone for the new cases per 1,000. You can see we came close to coming to that limit that keeps us green, but we maintained, we've actually stayed in the green zone. So with these slight trends upwards, I really wanted to go back and see how rapidly cases surged between Memorial Day and the Fourth of July weekend. As you can see, you know, we hit this, we had this really sharp incline and spike in case, in cases between, between Memorial Day and Fourth of July. You can see, even though we've seen, you know, a slight trend upwards, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a big spike. And I kind of, I think there's a few reasons for that. I think, number one, you know, our mask ordinance being in place has, has been a tremendous help in, in keeping the, the transmission of COVID down. I also really wanted to point out all the great communication and collaboration that's been happening. You know, all the outreach and enforcement as well by our livability team. And of course, you heard from Meg Thompson earlier, and her team has done a really tremendous job of communicating with businesses and keeping those communication lines open. And also, there's been a team that's been collaborating with the College of Charleston, the Citadel, to reduce risk and limit spread in our college population. And of course, we can't rule out the weather. Some of the big increases that we've seen are, are clearly happening where it's turned cold, but not necessarily everywhere. And just lastly, employee cases have really remained stable. We currently only have three active positives among our employees. And really, that's, that's all I have for COVID updates tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions or try to answer any questions you all might have.
Any general questions of Ms. Tracy? Boy, hearing, oh, Councilmember Seaking.
Just one quick question. I was just looking at your numbers just for our employees. How many of our employees in the last, let's say, week have actually been tested?
Have been tested? Was that the question?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Well, actually, I probably have a good idea. I think we have 12 right now who are waiting on test results. So those are the ones that we, of course, know about, that we've contact traced and, and are getting tested.
So with three positives right now, I mean, that's about right on the nest, on the average around South Carolina, of about 20%, 25% return on a positive.
So our, actually, our local positivity rate seems to be trending more along the lines of about 10%. So.
Thanks.
Sure.
So Tracy, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to skip on and give us the update along with Rick and whoever else you've got planned on our in-person meetings. We, we promised council we'd come back with yet some more drill down on this topic.
Okay. So in-person meetings, based on feedback from our last meeting, we wanted to come back with, back to you with some additional and updated, updated information regarding in-person meetings. And for efficiency purposes, two weeks ago, I, I presented all the findings and recommendations. Tonight, we thought it would be better if you really heard from all the subject matter experts on the team. So, so I'll just give a brief introduction and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to, to some of the team members as well. Obviously, this is, this is still the same. When we talk about holding successful in-person meetings that are low in risk as well, we need to really look at that matrix of how we bring technology capability, consider health and safety of everyone, and then also maintain citizen engagement. So for our recommendation that we talked about last time of using the ballroom, we've added an option for a one-time cost to purchase the equipment needed to conduct away meetings. So that's included. And Wes can talk a little bit more about that at the end. But we also took, we also heard an interest in meeting in council chambers as well. So we took a hard look at that. And based on the analysis, we could accommodate council, mayor, and the clerk, and basically, you know, no staff. And then we might have four spaces, but as you'll see from the diagrams that are coming up, very limited, maybe not any visibility up to what's happening in chambers. And then we think we could put eight additional people up in the balcony area. So with that, this is kind of the summary. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick Markowitz, who's our safety director. Sorry, safety director. And he's going to review the draft layouts for each facility and cover safety considerations. And then I think after Rick, we're going to hear from Jan Park, who I think everyone knows is our, our wellness coordinator, who's also a registered nurse. And we're also going to hear from Wes Rattery, our CIO. And he can dive into more details about the technology as they come up. So Rick, I'm going to hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Good evening, Mayor and council members. After last week's meeting, or last time we met, we wanted to provide you with some visuals. We think this is going to help you quite a bit. Of course, we want to see how it's going to look like for council to meet in person again. Of course, we want to give you as much information as we can for you to make a decision on when you do want to complete in-person meetings. Our goal is to keep everyone off our staff exposure spreadsheet for COVID-19. We do that by preventing close contacts and making sure everybody's wearing masks. The two options that we have, it's going to be, the first one is council chambers, and then the second one is using ballrooms one and two in the Gilead Center. Both of these options do comply with CDC, DHEC, and our emergency ordinance for face coverings and masks. So the first one we have is our, our current council chambers. The, the pink circles with the blue squares, there's 12 of them for each council member. I was over there again this morning. We're going to have to move some of these circles just a little bit, but this gives you an idea of what we're looking at. And we need to make sure that everybody is separated by six feet. That's the, that's the, the minimum that we want, want you to be separated. And then, as you can see, the mayor and the clerk of court will be up front where they usually are. Those two areas are going to have to be pushed way back to the, to the wall to make sure that we have the six-foot clearance. Of course, we need some IT support, the videographer, and a public microphone. And then over on the right side, we have, we have four pink circles. This can be used for city staff or anybody, anybody else that we need in there. If we don't have workstations, I think we can get six chairs in there and make sure everybody's still six feet apart. Not taking into consideration the public, obviously, we're going to have to stage them in the hallway. We can have one stairway designated for the entryway, the other one for the exit. Temperatures taken before they enter the building. And then based upon demand, we'll just have to move people through there. I know it's not the, the perfect setup, but that's what we're looking for to make the, the council chambers work. And here's the Gilead. There's actually three ballrooms. We've been given the use of the Grand One and the Grand Two with all the, the purple dots in it. Grand One will be setting up for our employees, for you, the council members, for the mayor, for the clerk, and the two microphones. And then if we need employee seating, we can keep them in there. It's a very large area. The, the partition or the doorway between ballrooms one and two will be open, so it's going to be a large space combining the two ballrooms. And I think there's, I didn't count them yet. I think there's 42 pinks, pink circles there. If we need to, I think we can increase that to 50 based upon the en- entry and the exit. But I'm comfortable doing the, the 42 as a, as a first-time run. And if, if we're able to add more, if we need more, we can certainly do that.
It's 49.
49, thank you. What you can't see on here are their salons. There's, it's the opening between the hallway and the ballroom. We're able to, to use stanchions to create an entryway and an exit point. And then, of course, temperatures would be taken outside as well before everybody comes in. I know Jan's going to talk about some other criteria that we could do. Some of this is required by the Guild, the Gilead management to use it. And the other stuff is just safety precautions that we want to focus on our employees to make sure that everybody's safe when you do decide to come back into in-person meetings. If there's any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer them. All right. Jan, I think we're going to kick it off to you just to talk about some of the requirements. But I, I just want to make sure everybody is aware that it's going to help in your decision. We have the Gilead available through the reigning of 2020. We have not talked about management at the Gilead and letting us get in there for any of the 2021. I don't know what their schedule is. We haven't even entertained that yet.
All right. Jan, did you want to weigh in next, please?
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Rick. He pretty much covered everything with a really thorough summary there. Just to clarify some of the confusion that I run into sometimes with our own employees and stuff is that masks are still required even if you're six feet apart and even if you were to have Plexiglas. So masks are still going to be required. So one, one of the challenges is how long do you want to tolerate having a mask on for really long meetings? So it's, it's tough. That's a, that's certainly a challenge. There is going to be an increased risk of transmission with meetings being very long. And so, you know, the masks are going to help with that. There's going to be some new guidelines issued soon that Dr. Richardson mentioned to me. They're not all finalized, but there's more being learned about aerosolized virus. there's more being learned about aerosolized virus. And so these guidelines might even get more strict, I hate to say. So for contact tracing, when we have to contract, contact trace any of our employees, which, which would certainly include any of you all as well. You know, we look, if someone is positive and our employee staff, we have to recommend quarantining for 14 days and testing for anyone who's close contacts. And those close contacts are defined as being within six feet for 15 minutes or more. It used to be a continuous 15 minutes, but now it's actually a cumulative 15 minutes. So just be very mindful of any of the time mingling together and talking before a meeting, after a meeting, if it's 10 minutes before, 10 minutes after, and then anytime during, if you're less than six feet, all of those minutes would add up to more than 15 minutes. So really, keeping that six-foot distance is so vital in your protection and in your risk reduction. And that's where, that's whether or not you have a mask on or not. So even if you have a mask on, that six feet, you know, is really, is really vital. So just because, you know, if we contact, we contact trace someone and they say, oh, I had my mask on the whole time, that doesn't matter. It, it's still within six feet, 15 minutes or more. The DHEC guidelines are, are going to be 14-day isolation and then follow-up testing. So it can really impact someone's life and your other jobs that you have outside of all this. So it's, it can be a little rough when, when we have to contact trace. So again, that distance is going to be, the distance and the mask-wearing both are going to be your two number one protection, because we really can't lessen the time. I mean, your meetings obviously are way more than 15 minutes. So we're not going to be able to control, you know, keeping meetings short. We can certainly do check-ins with the public for temperature checks and a COVID questionnaire. That is something the CDC has out that we can use to ask the public. And we'll have certainly additional staff there to help with traffic control. We'll have more room in the Gilead for public staging to be able to separate them out. Obviously, you'll have a little bit more elbow room in the Gilead and be able to have more public in that area. That's all I have to, to really add, and I'm happy to ask, answer questions as well.
And finally, Wes, with technology update. Wes, you're on mute.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, just to give you a quick idea of what we're looking at, if we meet in council chambers, as business as usual from the IT side, we don't have to do anything, add anything. We would set up as usual, so that would be no problem for us there. If we move into a different venue, then we have to provide a setup that can provide the audio. We need to provide a quality video recording as well as the live streaming we do. And also provide you with the sound you would need to hear one another within the size of that room and for the citizens to hear. So we have an outside vendor that we worked with in the past for meetings that's local. They've put together a proposal that gives us the components we need, some limited labor for setup and takedown with IT supplementing that to keep the costs down. So that's what that initial section there provides at the $3,000-plus per meeting to do that at the Gilead Center or another venue. We are looking at purchasing our own mobile package at some point. Going forward, this would help with our quarterly off-site meetings as well as other city meetings that may pop up in different venues. But if we pulled the trigger on that tomorrow, it would still be January before we could probably get that order, get it in from the vendor, set up, tested, training, all of that. So don't know that we'd be able to do that in time for anything for the remainder of this year. But again, that is something we're looking at going forward. So that's what we have at this point for the technology side.
Great. Any questions from council on any of this update? Councilmember Shade?
Thank you, Mayor. And Wes, I presume by, due to this process in person, either at the Gilead or at the city council chambers, we would preclude the Zoom platform access for citizens to participate in login. Is that right?
Yes, sir. All of this is built around in-person attendance or participation from, from citizens to try to do. Also, the Zoom or remote access would be a bit problematic and create some challenges in how you handle the moderation of that, the audio for it, or even any video if you were going to try to do that. So that would certainly add some layers of complexity we'd have to figure out.
And the other question, Mayor, I have would be, in order to provide for citizen input, either at city council chambers or at Gilead, we would then have to have some kind of ushering system, I guess, for lack of a better word, for folks to be able to usher the public in and out, those who wanted to participate in person. And I would like to know maybe from somebody as to what that personnel number would be, and who would be that personnel? Would that include uniformed officers coming in to bring public members in who wanted to have public comment and, and ensure that we did have to have the temperature taken? Then let them come in and, and address council, then exit out. How would we do that? The reason for asking that question is because then we're subjecting those folks doing that to being subject to COVID, being contagious to that, catching that disease. Those are sort of my comments and questions of the world and in the one. Thank you.
Right. And if, I'll come right to you in a minute, Councilmember Gregory. But just picking up on that, I, it wasn't reported, I don't think, by any of our presenters, but we, we did a survey of staff that normally attend our city council meetings. And we heard one at our last meeting, but I asked the rest of our department heads and staff that normally attend our city council meetings. And admittedly, some of them responded anonymously, some not. It was not a close election, y'all. It was, in fact, unanimous that under current conditions of, of COVID-19 rising in our country, we're not, you know, at a place yet where we have vaccine and all like that. Our staff unanimously would prefer that we not meet in person yet at this time. Councilmember Gregory?
Yeah, my question is to Wes. Wes, when we have our meetings in the communities remotely, technologically, how is this different from that?
Councilmember Gregory, in the past, we really haven't tried to facilitate that, that much. We've relied on resources at those locations. Clerk's office has brought in that little individual microphone setup they had, kind of the Mr. Microphone deal. And there's, sometimes there's been audio at those sites. So we're trying to put something in with all the spacing that everybody has a microphone. It ties back into the amplifier. We can audio, video record it, which we don't normally do in the off-site locations, as well as live stream it, which also depends on internet access at those facilities. So we're just trying to approach this more effectively and completely than what we've done in the past at off-site meetings.
And the Gilead doesn't have that techno, technological capacity?
They don't have the resources to do everything we need. They don't have all the microphones, the amplifier system. We can tap into their speakers within the room, but that's about it. We talk with them at least. Usually, people having meetings bring in the recorder.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would anyone else like to ask a question? Councilmember Brady?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question. Had we explored the, the possibility of using one of the Charleston County School District sites, like a high school gym or something to that effect, that would be a large enough space, and it would only be a relatively nominal fee, I would assume, to rent that space in the time being, instead of making a major outlay on just the rental component?
I can't say that we have. I mean, we, we've had meetings off-site before at Burke and at West Ashley High School, and we could do that again. But just remember back, we would normally pass one microphone across all 12 of us rather than having separate microphones. So I, I think the same portable equipment need would exist. All right. So next, I'd like, thank you all for all sharing. Oh, Councilmember Griffin.
Mr. Mayor, you told us that at this meeting, you'd be letting us know whether or not we'd be meeting in person before the end of the year. Have you made a decision on that?
Yes, sir. Well, I was going to have us make, have Susan bring forward the two things that we have to vote on the next, which is to also extend our ability to have these virtual meetings. It's my preference to wait, Councilmember Griffin, until the first of the year. I, I think it's the prudent thing to do from a health point of view, and I think, given the numbers that are rising and the reaction from our staff, I would like to respect their comments as well. So respectfully, if, if we were in the same vote we had last time, where I know some of y'all are ready to meet in person and some weren't, it was pretty even. And if I were to cast the, the tiebreaker vote, it would be wait.
Well, I've got a couple of questions for you then, Mr. Mayor. Number one, why are Charleston County, North Charleston, Somerville, Mount Pleasant, why are they all more equipped to handle an in-person meeting than we are?
I haven't asked them, Councilmember.
Well, maybe we should ask them, because obviously, they're way ahead of us in how we handle this situation. My other question is, how are we having ribbon cuttings all the time if our staff is so worried about coming to a city council meeting? We're having ribbon cuttings and all kinds of other events all the time. I don't understand. It doesn't make sense to me. It seems like a double standard.
Well, sir, I would tell you about other folks. I can't speak for them. I can only speak for us. And we, at the City of Charleston, have tried to maintain the, the best safety protocol following CDC guidelines. And that's why we've had this phased approach. I think it's been very effective. You saw the number of employees that we have, the low number that have COVID-19, and we've been able to keep our workforce working, you know, and, and respectfully, I, you know, I, I may have attended a ribbon cutting myself, wearing a mask, socially distanced. It's a little different environment when you have an occasional few-minute gathering where you keep distance as opposed to having a meeting that sometimes, as you know, can last four, five, and six hours when we know that a 15-minute exposure makes a difference in the spread of the disease. So I, I would respectfully say that those things make a difference.
Well, I just want you to know that I didn't sign up to be a virtual council member.
Correct. And none of us signed up to have a, a worldwide pandemic of a virus that's spread by aerosol. So I.
But yet, other, other municipalities all around us are obviously more equipped to handle it than we are.
I don't know that they're following the CDC protocol, Councilmember, and, you know, I can only speak for ourselves. We have a staff that's really drilled down on how to do it safely in the event that we choose to do it safely.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I actually did contact the municipal association on Friday just to see if they could give me some information about other cities that might be meeting virtually in the state. And as of the information that I received Friday, yes, some of our local municipalities are meeting in person, such as North Charleston and Mount Pleasant. But there are some other cities within the state, some of the big cities like Columbia, Greenville, Hilton Head, and Florence. They are still having their meetings virtually. And so what he emailed me said it was sort of a mixed bag. You know, some cities prefer to meet in person, but some prefer to meet virtually. It's really just up to the individual city. But as of Friday, those cities, Columbia, Greenville, Hilton Head, and Florence are still meeting virtually. Now, whether they'll continue to do so, I don't know. And those aren't all of the cities that, I mean, those are just, he just kind of gave me a snapshot of some of the big cities that are meeting virtually. So there may be others as well. So I just, I wanted to put that out there. That's, you know, might be something else for council to consider. I just wanted them to know, we're, we're not the only ones meeting virtually.
Thank you, thank you, Mother Clark. So if I may call on Susan Hurdina to share with us the items that we do need to, or we are asking you to take action on tonight. The first is just an extension of the declaration of emergency. Governor McMaster sent out an executive order yesterday extending that for the state of South Carolina, as he's done every 15 days for the last six months or so. And then we'll also take up the emergency ordinance about meeting virtually, and, and council can vote as they please. Susan?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. The first item that we're presenting is I-5, and that is the continuation of the local state of emergency. As the mayor said, this is in sync with Governor McMaster, who has continued the state, state of emergency on October 24th. If council approves this, the local state of emergency, the declaration of, of a local state of emergency would continue until November 30th, unless council took some action prior to that time. That's I-5. I-6 is an emergency order, ordinance, excuse me, extending several of the emergency ordinances that you all have passed previously. I just wanted to point out, and, and the ones that we, that were requesting be extended are listed on the bottom of page five and the top of page six of the ordinance. And I wanted to point out that on the bottom of page five, section two, is ordinance number 2020-040, which is the one that would permit city council to continue meeting and in a virtual, by virtual attendance. So that ordinance, as well as the other ones that are listed here, we would be requesting to be extended for, until, I'm sorry, until November 30th also. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I move that I-5 and I-6 be approved.
A second.
Any, any discussion on those? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. So thank you all, and we will continue on, at least for the next month, to, to, to meet virtually. I, I would, maybe when we consider our budget, take up the matter of whether council would like to invest in this equipment that would allow us to, to meet virtually at the Gilead, which if, when we start, I do think that would be the safest place for us to meet and be able to have, have guests available. And the, the thing about that is, you know, when we get back to normal and we're meeting in person around the city and other locations as we would do quarterly, it would, it would give us the equipment we kind of need to, to really have a, a better, a better meeting. You know, it, it has been kind of awkward passing the microphone around and all like that. So let's take that up in our budget deliberations. And if y'all want to purchase that equipment, then that would help facilitate where we go from here. Okay, next is our council communications. We got a discussion on amplification of speaking during carriage tour rides by the tour guide. Councilmember Griffin?
I'd like to withdraw that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we can, if, if you'd like to continue a discussion on that at, at appropriate committee or commission, I think the tourism mission would be a good place to.
I think it'll work itself out. Thank you.
Okay. So next is our committee reports. Councilmember Gregory on the license committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The licensing committee met.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The licensing committee met on yesterday at 3:00 PM. And under discussion was the ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, Chapter 21, to add a new section to prohibit the sampling of food, drink, and non-consumable products to pedestrians on the public right-of-way in the Central Business District. It passed three to two, Mayor. And as a result of that, I recommend approval.
All right. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Our councilmembers, Nate, Lady, and then Sheila.
Yeah, I just wanted to just state for the record, you know, with what we've talked about before, and the businesses on King Street struggling, I, I just really struggle to vote in favor of something that is going to limit, you know, the foot traffic into a store. And the sampling is often part of the business model for some of these businesses. And I, I agree, we need to tackle some of the aggressiveness. And I would, I would hope that the Central Business District Improvement Commission could come up with a recommendation on that. But I think this is a little heavy-handed, and it feels like it's a solution in search of a problem at the moment.
Carl, I mean, councilmember, one thing I did not mention was that we're going to implement it for 90 days. And if we find that it is problematic, we'll revisit it. But we did, after suggestion of Councilmember Griffin, we did put a time limit on when we will evaluate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Shealy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, you know, I understand the aggressiveness that's going on, particularly with the cosmetic and the soaps and things like that. And it's something we don't want in our city. We, we don't want people being harassed and brought in and, and, you know, just put on the spot and, and basically have things shoved down their throat to try to be pressured to be, to buy stuff. And we certainly want that stopped. The problem that I have with this ordinance is that it's, is that you're allowing people on one street to use marketing and, and use some, some ways to bring people in, and, but you're going to eliminate it on another street. And, and it's King Street, and it's from Line Street down to Broad Street, and it's a lot of businesses. And I, I understand, I want to stop the aggressiveness as much as anybody does, but I just feel like, I said this in the committee meeting, that there's some unintended consequences. And I know, you know, we said we'll look at it again in 90 days, you know, vote again, maybe, whatever. I just have a hard time voting for anything that's going to limit anybody's ability to market to businesses downtown. And so I, I can't support it because I, we are limiting a certain group of people, a lot of people, but a certain group of people in a specific area of our town. And I just don't think that's the right answer. I think that we can come up with something better. And I know we've worked on that. I know, I know that it's been worked on for a little while. And, but I, I just can't vote against businesses not being able to market their business and us making an ordinance and taking that away. So I got to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sakran, and then Waring.
Councilman Waring, you can go ahead. I think you had your hand up first. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. I've got a question about this. Have we, now this is going to be an ordinance that's going to require three readings?
Danny?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
In between this first reading and second reading, are we going to reach out to these aggressive actors and, and basically tell them if they don't change, there's going to be basically an ordinance that comes down that prevents this? Are we just going to kind of run this through and without communications at all? Obviously, something has to be done. I understand that. One of the persons that called in, I thought was on the committee, the Central Business District, I thought offered to try speak and work this out. So I think we should do that. I think we ought to try to work it out. And I'm not saying I'm new to this one. I didn't, I'm not familiar with the tactics. I'm over here West Ashley, and, and we don't do that, West Ashley. But anyway. But anyway, so I, I still think we ought to reach out and obviously try to communicate. This is no more different than the, the bad actor when we tried to open back up with the gurie. And they said they were going to comply, and it didn't comply. Eventually, we had to go move forward with the ordinance. But I do believe between the two, between the first reading and the second reading, hopefully it gives a chance to reach out. If there's no solution on that, then I think we move forward. But we'll at least try. So I'm, I'm a vote on the first reading, but I, I do want to hear some sort of report, attempt to try and reach out and change their actions on the street.
Yes, sir. Can I offer one step further, Councilmember Waring?
Sure.
Directly contact those businesses in question, and there are not many. But if anybody has a better idea on how to accomplish this, we, I'm happy to, to support a, a major amendment ordinance by the time we get the second reading. Because I'll be honest with you, this has been an issue ever since I became mayor over a week today. And I, and I think it was an issue before that. Nobody's been able to come up with a viable solution. So if y'all got one, let's give it first reading tonight. We'll have a, you know, the stick out there. But if you've got a better idea, bring it to us, and let's, let's talk about it. Councilmember Sakran?
I am going to call, call on my fellow councilmember, pal, who's, he's just, he's firmly going to say something. So go ahead.
Councilmember?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Sakran. And Mayor, you challenged, you, you put out a challenge for a, another solution to get to the same result, which I think we all share. And let's be very clear. You know, I, I work on King Street. I walk by one of these stores every single day. Aggressive sales tactics are integrally connected to what these people do. This is not a communications issue. This is a fundamental type of use that the city has decided and determined is a, is a, frankly, a nuisance. It's a noxious use. And this has also been a unanimous, if, or, or close to unanimous statement from the Central Business Improvement District Commission that we, we heard from earlier to this, this week. We can solve this problem through zoning. Here's how we do it. Here's how we do it. We just describe a use type that fits this category, that doesn't include other types of cosmetic sales and, you know, things of that nature. We put it in our zoning code, and we say the use is not allowed on King Street. This is what we do with sex shops. This is what we do with strip clubs. This is what we do with nuclear power plants. This is, I mean, the whole, you know, what, this is what zoning does. We decide what uses we want where, based upon community standards, norms, et cetera. This, this, this way, we don't have to cast this wide net around samples. So we have to potentially, you know, mix up, my former employer, Hyman Seafood, we, we don't want to stop Hyman Seafood from giving people hush puppies on the street. That was my job at one point. That was, that was maybe the best job I've ever had. But I know that Jacob and these folks in our planning department have looked at this. I think that there's been some concern that, that perhaps we can't come up with a zoning definition that is precise enough to capture this type of use. I would like to make a challenge to ours to have in our legal department. We've put a man on the moon. We have done some incredible things in this world. I am absolutely convinced that we can come up with a zoning use category that can get at this issue, that can get at these types of sales techniques from a use standpoint, prohibit it, make all the current operations, non-conforming uses have some sort of measure in that zoning ordinance that allows people to phase this stuff out under a fair constitutional amateurization provision. And we handle this just like every other land use or use issue that, that challenges us, challenges us as a city. This is, this is very achievable, and we can go in with a scalpel rather than casting such a wide net. And even the sampling ordinance, I mean, there's laws in the books already about these aggressive sales techniques. There's an enforcement problem because, you know, for all the reasons we can imagine about catching people in the act and doing this and doing that, zoning is something that's checked off at the business license approval stage, right? This is the easiest way we can catch and nip these types of uses in the bud when they come to get a business license, and we can phase out the ones that are already in operation. So that's my approach. I feel confident we can, we can get this done. But I would say, you know, we probably ought to give this first reading just to keep the wheels moving. Because this is, this is a very important issue. I mean, people get harassed on King Street every single day. And this is not something new. This has been going on for years. These folks have been communicated, there, there's been outreach. They understand, they know exactly what they're doing. And it's not acceptable on King Street. And it's, it, it's the other merchants on King Street that, that are the ones that are the most impacted by this. People will cross the road and avoid walking by in order to avoid this type of stuff. So I think we can solve the problem through zoning. Let's roll up our sleeves and sharpen our pencils and do it.
All right. I, I think we can accept that challenge. But I would like, as I mentioned, to have your support for first reading, to come back with a major amendment to this. But anyone else like to be heard? Councilmember Shade?
Very briefly, Mayor, I, Councilmember Pell just mentioned the important part of all this. It has a negative impact on other merchants and other businesses. I've heard so many complaints about folks saying that they feel that they're being impacted negatively by that. And this, Mr. Pell just mentioned, folks rots out the side of the street and ignore adjoining businesses because of this behavior. So let's give a first reading. Let's follow through on Councilmember Waring and Councilmember Pell's challenges, and just keep the momentum going on, on having this approved. Thank you.
Councilmember Seekings, and then Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief because Councilmember Shade and Councilmember Pell touched on it. This really is actually a pro-business move that we're making because we're not trying to stop one thing. We're trying to help other businesses. And people literally avoid entire stretches of King Street because of these tactics. And that is not good for business. We saw the graph you saw earlier tonight about the foot traffic on King Street, and getting foot traffic back on that street is the lifeblood of the city and of King Street. And so the, the tactic that is employed by certain merchants on King Street is bad for business on King Street. So we have to look at this. And Councilmember Pell, I, I applaud you for thinking sort of in the big picture that there's a solution. But, you know, the tactic that's employed for selling whatever it is that the people that I know, a lot of people, including me, try to avoid when I'm walking down King Street, can be employed in selling just about anything. So we just have to think about, as we go through and think about zoning on King Street, that, that we are really, right now, talking about a certain tactical behavior in sales that is churning people away from other businesses. So it's, it's a tough challenge. I'm glad that people are ready to step up, and I'm certainly ready to be part of that solution. But I think it's going to be, it's going to take some real thought. But for now, this is going to be very good for business on King Street, making this move, generally.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes, sir. I'm going to vote no tonight. But I will vote yes next time if we can change a couple of things. Number one, an exception for food. Number two, and I don't know how you get an exception for food in there, but I'd love to see what we can do legally on that. And number two, we were told in our meeting yesterday that people that are actually selling for a price are allowed to continue to do that outside. So we're talking about free samples here. So what's really going to change by limiting free samples? I can tell you what I would do if I was a business person. I would just charge somebody a dollar. I would, I would market it for a dollar and still be out on the street corner. So there's a lot of issues with this. I think it's really vague, and I would like for us to either strengthen it so that people can't just charge a minimal amount of money and do the same thing. And obviously, I think that our food, I'd be remiss not to mention all of the candy shops that, that have Pralines and, and convince people to come in and buy Pralines. I mean, that would just be a total un-Churston thing to do, to take them off of the streets. So I think we need to find a, a more common sense approach to this. And I think that even though we're trying to target a certain area, we got to make sure it doesn't have an adverse effect on other vendors that are doing things the right way.
Thank you, sir. Point well taken. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I have more of a question. I mean, I, I had the same reaction as Councilmember Griffin. Why can't we just eliminate the words food and drink from this ordinance that we're going to give a first reading to?
There was, there was a reason for that. Ms. Borden?
Yes, sir. The reason is we cannot discriminate against the different types of businesses. I mean, the, the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, businesses, and citizens that utilize the public right-of-ways on King Street, given the narrow nature of the particular street and the historical ambiance and the number of, the, the amount of foot traffic that the street sees. And so to distinguish between a retailer versus a food, a food, food establishment, there, there's no rational basis for that distinction because they both caused the same issue, which is the crowding of the streets, the stopping of pedestrians, and causing people to walk out into the, out into the lane of travel to continue moving down the street. And so for those reasons, you have to treat the businesses alike.
Is this, I'm sorry, can I just ask a follow-up then? Is this just an excerpt of a, a larger document that has those whereas's or whatever? How, how do we know that we're not allowed to discriminate? What, what conditions are we setting up in some legal document that, you know, sets the story for why we can't make a distinction between food and non-consumable products? Where would this be found?
What we?
In the code?
Well, this would be a new code section in the code under the licensing, under Chapter 17 licensing. And so we can go back and add some whereas clauses. You know, I did not include those in this draft, but I'm certainly happy to. You know, this came to us at the request of Neighborhood Services and the Central Business District Committee, Commission, excuse me. And so I'm happy to go back and add those before the second rate, second and third reading.
Well, it sounds like we might even take a different approach and look at the zoning approach. But anyway, we're going, we're going to accept the challenge to rethink this. But in the meantime, have something in place. So any further discussion before I call the question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, and mine's just a comment to respond to Councilwoman Jackson. I mean, just a simple preamble could explain that. You don't need the whereas's. The pre, the, a preamble to any ordinance tends to answer many of the questions that Councilwoman Jackson just raised.
That could be an approach of, of improving that. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Nay.
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 So I have, I have nays. Is that Councilmember Shealy, Councilmember Griffin, Councilmember Brady, Councilwoman Jackson? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
All right. The motion passes, but I should accept the challenge and come back to you with something improved by the next meeting. Okay, next is our committee on public works. Councilmember Waring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of the actionable items that you all have reviewed on your public works agenda passed unanimously by the committee, and I so move it before council.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the items that were up for discussions, in particular, two of them, the Ashley Hall Road and Captiva, I want to thank all of our staff. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for the additional information you dug up with staff's assistance. It was a hearty discussion. We have great resources brought forward from our staff. And it turns out that it was actually, this question was actually in the county, not. in the county, uh, not, uh, it's right on the borderline, which made it confusing for all. I think it's gonna be a teachable moment for the city and the county when it comes to situations like this going forward. Uh, my understanding is the county's actually working on this and digging into their system to see how did this change happen in this instance. Should have a answer on that, I think, in the next couple of days. Um, and the request for, um, uh, uh, bail tear and, um, the closing of public rules, um, legal staff is gonna dig into that and look at that citywide and report back to our public work committee in two weeks. So that was pretty much a good discussion, but we're looking forward to staff, staff research and reporting back. With that, that was the gist of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. In addition, there was a discussion of 5G wireless.
Right, right, right.
Do you want to hear that?
Well, it was a lot of good discussion about 5G and I think the public, as well as we, are finding some frustrations where we're being told, uh, by our legal, uh, counselors that federal law prevails and basically we have to stand down. Um, that said, uh, again, uh, our legal department has really been burning the candles on both ends. I, I, um, our finance department with AAA ratings, our, our legal department, if we're reading, we'd be getting AAA's on them too. But, um, beyond that, a good hearty discussion, but no actionable, um, items on our part, Mr. Mayor, if you want to add to that.
Well, not really. We've just had a lot of public comments about this issue over the last couple of months. And I thought it was appropriate that staff, uh, and the legal department dig down on it one more time. Um, because we, we would like to make, um, um, approval of, of these, uh, new poles and all in our city. Um, you know, frankly, as challenging as, as possible in respect of our historic district, if nothing else. Um, but, um, it's, it's clear from, um, that home rule does not rule in this case because the federal government has basically preempted local governments from being able to make decisions about this infrastructure. And, and they refuse to recognize that there are any, uh, health issues related to, uh, these wireless, this wireless infrastructure. And the state of South Carolina has really done a similar, uh, thing. So, uh, it's, it's mostly out of our hands and, and, and I just want our citizens to understand that. If, if, if they really want to advocate change on this matter, they've got to, um, uh, deal with our federal representatives first. That's where most of this is coming down from. And we've been subjected to lawsuits in federal court that, uh, have continued to tie our hands. So we're doing the best our, we can, but, uh, it was good for, for legal staff to delve into the matter one more time. All right. Um, anything else, council member?
That's the extent of my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So next, our committee on ways and means. Council member Gregory?
Uh, move for approval?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Mayor, Mayor, did you have an order? Were we supposed to vote on anything in public works?
Did.
Yeah, everything.
He did it?
Yeah. That first.
We did that first.
Okay. Thank you.
So, uh, public?
What's that?
Uh, public works was very efficient. It went straight through, you see?
I didn't remember I was voting on it. Okay.
So next, next is our bills up from second reading. We have eight items on the agenda.
Move for approval?
Y'all want to take it together or anybody want to break any of them out?
Move for approval, all eight.
Second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on one through eight, second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Now for third reading and rat.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And we have one bill up, I believe, for first reading. Um, this is regarding that same matter that was a public hearing, I think, regarding the right of, uh, protection of St. Philip's Street.
A move for approval, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion to approve any discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 10th. We look forward to seeing you then. And, uh, we stand adjourned and a good evening to everybody.